I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two school committee meeting. In keeping with an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of
Recording in progress.
Signed into law by Governor Baker on June sixteenth. Two thousand twenty-one, this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board members will be remote and attendance should count towards quorum. The meeting will be broadcast live on Facebook and recorded on E cap. This meeting is open to the public and we'll take questions via the chat teacher feature at the bottom of your screen. Please make sure to include your full name and address. We'll do our best to answer questions, however, we will not read questions that have already been answered. And I do want to add on to the public comment. Portion for tonight, we're anticipating potentially a high volume of questions coming in. So what we're going to do in order to allow for everybody to be able to be heard is everyone will get one question at first. And if we have time after everyone's had one question, we can go back and do a second round or as many as we can fit in. Alright, so I just wanted to make that clear right at the beginning. Alright. Vote to approve music department out of state trips, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. The. Chair of the music department, I'm just looking to see if he's here. Mr. Benson is presenting an out of street, out of state music trip to the University of New Hampshire. It's scheduled for March twelfth. It's a performance clinic for Oliver Ames students. The cost of the trip will be three thousand five hundred dollars, which will be funded by activity fees and tempo. It includes two chaperones and fourteen students who will be attending and I don't.
Do you want us to wait for him? Do you want me to move that agenda item? Or?
Not sure if he was planning on coming. I do want to give him an opportunity to comment if he has any further information. So if we could table that for now and and Mrs. Suzie will watch for him.
Absolutely. Do we need to vote to table it? Or can I just table it?
Oh, he. He has said he's on his way. You can take items out of order.
Okay.
And I would, the, the issue is that item number two is.
Everything else is kind of a long thing.
Lengthy.
Just a couple minutes?
That's totally your call.
Is the school committee okay with that? Alright, we'll give them just a couple minutes.
Let's check on that.
He's here. I just promoted him to a panelist.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh. He just said that he's on, but it's not. It's not letting him on. Not sure. Let me try calling him.
I'm going to just take the moment in case anyone just signed in late because I see the number increasing. I'm just going to reread about public comment and go over how we're handling it tonight since we have a couple of seconds. So this meeting is open to the public and we'll take questions via the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. Please make sure to include your full name and address and we'll do our best to answer questions. However, we will not read questions that have already been answered. And in addition to that, because we expect a high volume potentially of questions. We are asking that everyone is going to have a chance to ask one question. And then once we've gotten through and given everybody the opportunity to be able to ask at least one question. We can go back and revisit additional questions as time allows. Chrissy, I don't know if you're talking to us. Okay.
Sorry, I was talking to Jeff. He's here now. He should be here now. There we go.
Hi, everybody. So sorry.
No worries. All you.
I am here to request permission to take the OA Jazz Band to the Clark Terry Jazz Festival at the University of New Hampshire Durham. The reason that we've added this event to our calendar is to replace the Berkeley High School Jazz Festival. Which for twenty-five, thirty years was a fixture of the OA Jazz Band calendar. But the year before the pandemic was ended by Berkeley, they're no longer hosting that festival. So we're looking for collegiate playing experience for the students. And this is a festival that I personally have some experience with, so it's the next closest one that we can take the, take the kids to. So. I have information on their COVID protocols. If that's something that, that you guys would like to discuss. We also have the, the quote from Lucini. For the bus, we're going to go with Lucini for the bus ride. This will be at no additional cost to the students. It'll be covered out of our activity fees. Just as the Berkeley High School Jazz Festival was. So is there anything, what, what would you like me to start with? I guess.
Any questions? I'm super excited for this. I know the kids were disappointed when Berkeley ended.
Me too.
This is wonderful.
This is a good one. So we'll go up and it'll be, there'll be a festival adjudication. And then you get a half hour panel with UNH Jazz faculty. And then they throw a performance with professional jazzers at the end of the night. So it's, it looks like a great day.
Isn't open to spectators? Like, can people go?
Yes and no, that's part of the, the COVID protocols. So what they're doing is limiting each band to forty tickets that we had to purchase in advance. So we'll distribute those as fairly as we can amongst the students.
Interesting. Jen, I'm sorry.
Yep, I did have, I, I am curious to hear what their COVID protocols are just because I'm. Curious about that. And then I also wanted to point it. So I know the form that you filled out and thank you for filling this out. So I think this was intended, the form is intended for, you know, the more in-depth, you know, foreign travel overnight program. So I know we had, we have a mandatory checkbox on there for about vaccination. I just want to clarify, I'm assuming that doesn't apply to this trip in practice. Is that? Correct? Because there's no overnight accommodation?
There is no overnight, no.
Okay.
We wouldn't require it, but does it have venue?
No. So in terms of UNH's COVID protocols. They are requiring masks always to be worn inside buildings unless eating. And they, they have specified specific areas for eating and drinking. And their expectation is that you're removing and replacing as you would on an, on an airplane. They are still requiring bell covers for all wind musicians. So we're clear there because so do we. And then they've set up an onsite location if a student is feeling ill or presenting symptoms. They want you to report that immediately and they've also set up an email system so that in the few days following the event. If you have a kid that displays symptoms and or test positive, they've, they've set up a, a, a system so that we can report a symptomatic student. And then, you know, if our band was say in a location where there was another band, they would let the other band know that there was a symptomatic student in that area. So, and then for us, all the same rules we're following now are what we're planning on masks on the buses, windows open when, when possible. Extra space as we are able.
Okay, great. That sounds very thorough. Thank you.
Do you want to ask some questions? Comments? How many students are going, Jeff?
Thirty-ish?
So the two days of jazz bands.
Yeah, well, actually that week, this will be our third jazz band competition in five days. We have a busy week that week.
Oh, my goodness. Alright. No other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the music department out of state trip?
So moved to Luca.
Can I get a second?
O'Neil second.
Roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Your answer, yes?
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Have a good time. Will it be livestreamed?
I don't know. They haven't, they haven't sent any information about that yet. I know we're getting recordings. I'm not sure about video.
Okay, let me know. Let us know. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next up, presentation and vote to accept the OA's Program of Studies. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. You can see. Principal Kavanaugh has joined us this evening. We have the pleasure of hearing the Program of Studies review for this year for Oliver Ames High School. As you know, we annually take a look at that, let you know about any inclusions, exclusions, modifications and so on. So I will send it over to Mrs. Kavanaugh at this point.
Thank you very much. I'm really excited to present to you the work we've done on the Program of Studies. Over the past few months and I just need to take a quick moment to thank all the faculty and the department heads who put so much time and effort into really. Hearing feedback from students from each other and taking careful consideration into how we need to adjust. The courses that we offer to meet the needs of our kids. So huge shout out to all of them and a huge shout out to Ms. Crowley. Who is the one who puts this all together for us. So I just wanted to make sure that I mention them before I move into everything. I'm going to share my screen. So then I have a presentation for you. That highlights. What you're going to see in the changes. So let's see, I just need to be able to present this. Okay, so here is. An overview of what I'm going to present to you this evening. So first. The agenda for the day, I'm going to do an overview of the program, the adjustments to the Program of Studies. Go through the specific course changes that you're going to see. And then a little bit about thinking ahead, we're thinking about the future already and how we're going to continue to improve the Program of Studies. In a variety of different ways and I want to share that with you. So to start, and I know you've got a copy of the Program of Studies, I believe, in advance the, the draft proposal. We reformatted the first section of the Program of Studies, just to make it a little bit more user friendly. Put some tables and charts in to clearly explain the graduation requirements. I reviewed it closely with Susan Minku, so huge thank you to her. To make sure that all the information was up to date and accurate and accessible. And then finally, we added two sections to the beginning. One is a description of our course levels. And one is a description of how we calculate the GPA, which we got from the student handbook. We just felt like it belonged in both places, not just in the student handbook. So here are the different course proposals by department. Feel free to jump in and interrupt me if you have any questions as I go through them. So the first is in business and technology. So we have identified. That we really, our students would really, really benefit from the. Real life, the career focused skills that they could gain from having yearbook as a course at our school. I'm really excited about this. So we're adding the yearbook course. It's going to give them experience in graphic design, marketing and publishing, and then they'll also work to obviously build their yearbook throughout the year. With our distribution and our printing company, along with looking at some local and national. Yearbook groups that support students in understanding the different ways that you design a yearbook and. And gives them opportunities for conferences in order to. Collaborate with students across the nation in developing their yearbook and coming up with themes and all the things that maybe you wouldn't think about that are the behind the scenes piece of your book development. That also, which is great, apply to career and college skills. This course is replacing the internship course that we had before. After careful consideration and speaking with the students enrolled in that course this year. Our schedule is just not designed to meet the needs of having students leave the building during the day for an internship. And as much as the faculty and students have put a lot of effort into establishing internships for the students in that course, it's been really challenging. We think that this is almost like a way to create an internship within ourselves and within the building. And of course, that doesn't require students to go out. So that is business and technology. I'm going to keep going, but let me know if you have any questions. So next is English. English, we're adding a semester elective called marginalized voices in literature. The students will develop multiple interpretations and responses to literacy texts from a variety of viewpoints that you don't typically see in the English literature canon. Most of this will be done through discussions and writing. So there is going to be a focus on developing their own authentic voice in their writing. And it'll be open to all students. And a huge thank you to the English Department for putting this together and to Ms. Kaufman. In industrial, technology and engineering, we revamped the entire Program of Studies for this, for this section. So we changed the course titles and the descriptions as well as some of the activities they do within the courses. In order to add some introductory experiences to prepare them for future courses in engineering, architecture and other STEM pathways. We keep those core introductory courses that give them the basis and the experiences in a variety of different types of technology. At the same time, we've also with the hiring of a new teacher in this department, we've been able to. Increase the number of courses that we're offering. So on my next slide here, I share with you. These are the new course titles and all of the courses we'll be offering next year. Built into these as kind of our forward thinking is some exploration in things like drone technology in. Underwater robotics so that students can get exposure to different types of technology in the hopes that we will create. Additional electives in the future for groups of students with more specialized interests. In the music, in the performing arts department, we've actually removed two courses. One is intro to piano and one is music history. And the reason for this is there's a low interest in, low enrollment in these courses in the past few years. But there's an increased interest in guitar and in music technology. And actually, in the past two years, we have had more students. Request music technology for their coursework than we've been allowed to, been able to let them in. So this will provide us with the, hopefully the space to be able to allow those students to take those courses. Additionally, something that I'm really excited about is that we are going to add an honors option to our band, chorus and orchestra courses. So in the past, these have all been at the same level, the CP two, one level. And so the students will do additional term papers, additional projects during the year. As well as be held to a higher level of academic and musical performance standards. This will really open the doors for students in our building who excel in music or who want to challenge themselves in new ways. And have it on their transcript as an honors course. In the science department, we have two, three changes. The first is that the anatomy and physiology course, we're requesting to have two levels, honors and CP. And this is because we have a lot of students who are interested in diving deeper into the anatomy and physiology curriculum, particularly those who maybe want to consider a, a college major as pre-med. And so we'd like to offer them the opportunity to engage in a course that dives deeper, has a lot more information. And higher level thinking skills built into the curriculum to support their growth in, in this course. And the second, which I'm very excited about is a, a senior leadership project course. That Mr. Cutros, one of our chemistry teachers designed. And this course is going to allow our students to do a lot of project-based learning. It's very progressive in looking at local and global data in order to analyze different types of sciences across. Across the world, really. So we're looking at clean water case studies, climate change case studies. Science and social justice case studies, and then they will do a, a full long-term report. Their own data collection, their own labs and presentation of their findings of a case study. This course is replacing the forensic course that we have offered in the past few years. The science department is really aiming to do more progressive things with their courses. And as much as the, as the forensics courses sometimes of high interest to students. We're finding that doing a course such as this will provide us with the opportunity to do up-to-date fieldwork and technology. And be flexible in different activities that students can do, giving them some voice and choice. Whereas the forensics course, at this point, we don't have the ability to, we don't have the, the faculty right now. Who have the background knowledge of the new and up and coming forensics technology that's coming out. And so this is just going to provide them that opportunity.
Kelly, sorry to interrupt. This is Chrissy. So this is called the Science Leadership Project. I think you said at the beginning, Senior Leadership Project, but it's, it's science. That's okay. I just want to.
We have a senior leadership project too.
Yes.
Thanks for correcting me. Yeah, this is very science focused. Okay, next, in the social studies department, I'm excited about these two electives. They're really going to increase our students' opportunities to meet the standards of our foundational transfer goals, particularly around knowledge and truth seeking and acting with a global perspective. I'm really excited about that. So there are human geography and US foreign policy. You can read there what these courses are about, but they really help students to understand from the foreign policy piece. Civics and how policies are created. And then from the human geography piece, how. Where you live impacts the development of your society. And then students can look at from a really global perspective, ecologically, politically, economically. How they are interconnected and how they're independent based on where the geography of the, of the space of the, of the culture of society. Okay, in world language, there's a quick change and that is that the Spanish learning program, which is a travel program, that's the trip that's going to Puerto Rico this year. That was not in the Program of Studies, so we added that in. And then PE wellness has a quick adjustment. They looked over the course titles and made two changes. Elements of Wellness is now called Cardiovascular Wellness. Weight Training and Personal Health is Weight Training and Personal Fitness. And they adjusted those names to better. Explain the, the content of the, of those two courses. So those are the course proposals for, our course proposal changes for next year. I think I'd like to stop and see if you have any, any questions on those before I move forward into the last slide, which talks about the future planning of the Program of Studies.
Kelly, I have a question about the Spanish travel program.
Yeah.
So the trip itself is part of the curriculum? Is that, you said it's a travel course?
Yeah, so in our Program of Studies, students who travel abroad can receive credits by enrolling in the course. So same thing with our other international programs. And this one was not in the Program of Studies. So students can earn two credits for going on this surface learning trip.
So this would be an additional class per se that they're taking outside of the normal amount of credits they need to take?
Yes, so a student takes thirty-five credits a year. This, a student who goes on this program on this trip would take thirty-seven credits that year.
I, I think Michelle's asking if this is a period during the school day as well.
It is not.
My question, because my concern was, God forbid, we ever have another year where we can't send people away and travel. How would that affect the program? But it sounds like they don't sign up for this until we know that they were going on a trip. Is that correct?
You may have noticed in past presentations to you for trips. When we share, when the, the providers share, what are some learning opportunities or credit opportunities for students? They will list either some. Program that they can enroll in or the opportunity for credit, sometimes college credit. In this case, it is giving high school credit to students who participate in the trip as long as they complete. The additional requirements that would be necessary to get the credits, but it wouldn't be a period during the day.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have questions on this part? I can't see.
Michelle, Nancy? The question I have is the, do we have faculty in place to cover all these changes? For example, in the industrial arts or in the music, it seems to me there's a lot of changes there. Are there enough staff right now or are there going to be changes in the amount of staff?
Right now, there's enough staff for what we are offering. In the majority of the, of the, of the, of the department. So industrial arts, yes, we have the two. We have two teachers in there now, so we can offer ten different course options. In social studies, however, I will say that we have a variety of electives for students to sign up for. So the, whether or not the elective run does, is based on the number of students enrolled. We couldn't offer all of those. And we also are really mindful of running courses where the number of students in the course is. You know, an appropriate number to run a course. So we wouldn't run a course with only five students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Anyone else? Alright.
Okay, so finally, just to wrap up, a few changes coming in the future. So I'm really excited. We're going to dive into looking at the twenty-first century skills and OA core values that were written back in two thousand four. And rewrite them under the guidelines of vision of a graduate. Which some of us have been trained in here at the school. And, and really what that does is help us to take things like the core, eastern core values and transfer goals, which we want to align these two. And apply skills to them that we can assess and we can give students feedback on. So our hope is that when we present the Program of Studies to you next year, that we will have. Updated our, our, our vision of a graduate from the, what was written back in, in two thousand four. The next thing that's really exciting is that we're collaborating with local colleges to try to add early core, college courses and certificate programs into the Program of Studies. So right now, we have after-school certificate programs running with the American Safety Programs. So that's. Students currently are enrolled in deep sitting and then we're doing a certificate program in first aid and CPR this year. And then over the summer, we're hoping to offer certifications, or we're planning to offer certifications in CNA, Certified Nursing Assistant, phlebotomy and EMT. So these are really great opportunities for our students to get certified in areas where they can start working. And can really dive into the exploration of a future of studying that area in college or as a career, as a future career. On top of that, right now, we have three colleges that we're working closely with to try to. Plan how we can offer kids college credits from the courses that we currently offer here at school. And that's the, oh, this is BAC, it's Boston Architectural College, Stonehill and Assumption. These call, programs are, are willing to offer college credits for the courses that we teach here. As well as some summer and postgraduate offerings for our students. And are, some of them are very, very high rated distinctions. For example, Assumption College is one of three colleges. That has the approval of distinction from DCE for their education programming. So we're really excited to partner with these schools. And over the next year, I'm working with the guidance department to establish. The pathway that we need to take in order to start. Giving our students the opportunity to enroll in courses that give them early college credit here at OA. If you look in the Program of Studies, the last page of the Program of Studies has a list of all the special education courses that we offer here. But it does not have this program descriptions or, or leveling. So we are going to work as a school and I'm going to collaborate with the special education department to provide programmed. Course descriptions for every single one of those courses. So that, you will see in the next update. And then, you know, we're, we're always looking for feedback. So we will work to adjust our course offerings to meet the needs of our students as they change. And any feedback that you or the community, parents, students have over the courses that we're offering. I very much encourage you to reach out to us so that as we plan the next Program of Studies, we're thinking about. How we can engage students in learning that's going to give them experiences in areas of interest. And that, I'm going to stop sharing. That is everything for the Program of Studies. Thank you so much for your time. Do you have any other questions?
Any school committee member have a question? Jen?
Thank you for the presentation. This is really exciting and they.
And there are definitely areas here where I, I know, you know, my, my kids who've graduated would have loved some of these core course offerings. So I'm glad to see them. Uh, glad to see them, that they'll be available to our current and future students. Can you tell us about some of these courses? What I'm excited about is, is the opportunity to, um, to have some, to have like our inclusion students engage in more interesting electives where they can succeed. So can you, I know that that's been a focus of yours. So can you just talk to us a little bit about some of the conversations that have gone on around that and where you see the, the proposed changes moving that goal forward? And then, you know, what's maybe a longer term goal?
Yeah, I, I think, um, I just wanted to quick clarify a question. Do you mean inclusion in terms of ensuring that, um, all students, but students specifically with IEPs?
IEPs or, or five oh fours, yeah, just, yeah, students who, who, you know, might be, tend to struggle academically or, or not the shining stars academically, yeah, that they have good, robust offerings.
Yeah, I, um, so we, so we currently offer two, two courses. One is a unified gym class, which has been great, I've observed it a few times. And so it's, um, students, um, on IEPs or of special needs who are paired with students in the general education population to increase their social skills, their ability to play games. So that's a very structured inclusive model. And then we're also doing that with some of our music classes. Mr. Corn teaches a course that allows students who maybe struggle, especially with attention, to engage in different types of instruments, understanding how music works, rhythm. And so that's been, that's been an addition we have. I think that in terms of moving forward, it's just a continued conversation with the Special Education Department, particularly around course recommendations times with encouraging those students who maybe would hesitate to request a course that might be challenging or might, they might feel, unfortunately feel like they don't belong and to set up that, up for success so that as they head into next year, there's a very clear understanding of, of how the student learn best, learns best, what's the best way to accommodate their needs in an inclusion space or in a general education classroom. And then make sure, it, it's all about that proactivity, right? So making sure that we pre-plan so that on that first day of school or in that first week in that course, that, that the expectations are really clear in terms of how the student is going to engage and what ways we can support them. And that work, which we've done in the past, will continue and will increase.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Michelle, you're muted.
Any other questions or comments? No?
We do have two, okay.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Uh, this is really impressive, and I agree with Jen. It's exciting, and I'm happy for the students that are going to have this, these additional opportunities. That's it. Thank you, though. Kelly, great, great presentation.
Oh, thank you. I'm excited for them, too.
Chrissy?
We do have two questions in the chat related to this topic. So I thought it might be a good idea to have them addressed while Ms. Kavanaugh is still here. So the first one is from Dennis Gibson, one eighty-five Lincoln. Will small engines and forensics still be offered? I know several kids signed up but didn't get to take it.
So forensics will not be offered next year. We are replacing that course with the Science Leadership Project course. Small Engines is built into, and I'm going to look at, I don't have this memorized, so I'm going to look in here, in the, um, in the new course description. So the way that we've looked at industrial arts and engineering program is to build experiences with, at the, at the kind of entry level courses, is build experiences with a bunch of different, different technologies and woodworking and metalworking experiences for students. So I know that Small Engine is still built into the courses that we teach, but it is not a separate course. And that's what I was speaking to earlier when I said our hopes is that we will give students a variety of experiences, get their feedback, and then develop some electives that are specialized and highly in tune to certain areas of exploration for these students. And it might, it might change. So we're, it would be something that would be fluid. We might offer like a drone technology course one year or something maybe around landscape architecture, but that might not be something that is of interest to students at a different time. So we want to make sure that it's fluid and that we're really, we're really honed in on what the students are interested in learning about currently in our school.
And then the next one is from Sharon Gibson, one eighty-five Lincoln Street. The honors chemistry class size was recently doubled due to class consolidation from a teacher leave and a retirement. Is this a permanent solution for this year? How does that impact the science classes and added science project next year?
Okay, so, um, this is a, this is two different questions, I feel like. So the first is about what's currently happening. We have a chemistry teacher who is on leave, and one of the courses was two sections that were fairly small that we have, we have combined one teacher section with another in order to make sure that we can give them the honors level coursework that they, that they really need. And by combining those two courses, it's given us that opportunity. It's not, it's not, it's not over our capacity like we usually would have. So that's something that's happening currently, and that's for the duration of the leave, which I believe is the end of May, but I, I would need to look to get the exact date. The second question, I think, is about the Science Leadership Course, Ms. Purlett. I, um, do you remember?
Yeah, let me just get to it. Sorry.
Yeah.
Um, it was, how does that impact the science classes and added science project next year?
Um, well, we've removed the forensic course, so it wouldn't change the numbers across the board, it would, of the courses that we run, because we've replaced forensics with this Science Leadership Project. I hope that answers your question. I'm not sure.
We'll also have the full-time teacher that can take next year, I think, is probably-
And the majority of those classes are, are covered by, by a teacher, by obviously one of our, one of our certified chem teachers. This was the best way for us to make sure that those students got that.
Right, typically we'll get a substitute for a course, but what we did here was make sure that we had our own certified teachers covering those other courses. So that's obviously very important in every course, but particularly in specialties like chemistry and physics.
And then the last question is from Ben Ray, one forty-seven Randall Street. I didn't see any courses focused on software development or writing code, which is a major industry in Boston. Will there be future courses on that?
Well, so we, I didn't, I didn't speak to them in this presentation because they're not a change, but we do have computer science courses in our program of studies, and I would encourage you to take a look at those. It is something that we are continuing to look at because we believe that in the future, there's going to be a push to have rightfully so more computer science courses offered within our, our program. So it is one of the things that the math department had, Ms. Rowlands has been watching very closely because it's something we, an area we might want to grow in in the future.
Right, that's a, that's a great point. The program of studies is very long and extensive. This evening's presentation was just going over any changes, inclusions, additions, or modifications. So please watch for the updated program of studies on the website. The current one is there, so you can see anything that you didn't hear about being changed this evening. So we definitely have a computer science course offering and a teacher and want to expand it in the future. But if you didn't see something that wasn't mentioned here, is, is very good chances because we're already, we already offer it, and we're not planning on changing it or modifying it at this time. Those are, that's a great point of clarification. Thank you for asking that.
Any other questions? Anything from school committee? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kavanaugh.
Thank you everyone very much. I'm really excited for this next year. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Oh wait, we have to vote on that. So I get a motion to accept the OA's program of studies.
Star, so moved.
Second?
O'Neill, second.
Can I get a roll call vote?
O'Neill, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Westman, yes.
Star, yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, discussion and vote to approve capital plan. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. We have Director of Operations, David Twombly, and I don't think Marilyn Gordon is here, but she certainly worked on it a great deal with David and with the entire central office team. Tonight, we have the proposed capital plan for your consideration. The plan has been included in your packet. It is an extensive plan that covers several years. We, this evening, are just including this year's capital requests. Of course, things like facilities and proactive projects are planned out several years in advance, and we do have that full document, but this evening, it's just this year's capital priorities. And it does require your vote so that we are able to present it to the Towns Capital Committee. Mr. Twombly?
Yep, so, um, I believe Lynn on Monday, late last week, maybe, had shared the capital project document with you. However, there has been some changes, some late minute changes, actually. We had some changes with the, um, we got a quote for the security system from Perkins Eastman, who is working with us. You may be familiar with Perkins Eastman, they're the designers on the new Blanche Ames Elementary School. So they're working with us on the security system. And they gave us an updated quote, which was a little bit more than what we anticipated, so that, I'll go over that in a minute. In addition to that, uh, we found out from the Community Preservation Act Committee, CPC, I believe we call it here in Eastman. CPA, which is Wayne Bitner, Bitler, who is on that committee or who works in the planning department. They notified us, uh, late yesterday that they will not be giving out any CPA funds in May, but they will be giving out CPA funds in May of two thousand and twenty-three. So right now, we've submitted our application to possibly redo the Richardson Homestead Playground. We're looking for design monies to do that through capital. And then if we were to get, um, those monies, then possibly next May, we would, uh, maybe the summer after, we would try to do the Richardson Homestead Playground. So that's a little bit in flux. That was kind of like a little curveball. We originally thought we would be able to apply for those funds for this year and start the process over the summer, but that was a little bit of a curveball that we got here, but that is on the list. So I'll kind of, again, I'll go over the list, uh, each item, and then we can have a discussion at the end. So starting at the top, the first, um-
Do you want me to, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you want me to project it now, David?
Yeah, can you do that? Yeah, that'd be awesome. Yeah, I think that'll help out everybody, kind of visual. Thanks, Chrissy. Appreciate it. All right, so the first item that we have on the list is, uh, we have five tennis courts over at Oliver Ames High School, which need to be repaired during bad, bad need of being replaced. We're going to actually have tennis out there this spring, but we'd like to try to get these replaced or remodeled possibly over the summer. The DPW is working with Bill Matthews on, on the, putting it out to bid. They're putting together the schematic design, which would require us to go out to bid because it's over the bidding threshold. But again, we were looking to apply for CPA funds for this project. However, CPA funds will not be available this year. So this is something that we would probably have to change and just go straight up for capital funds because this is, uh, something that we really do need. The next item-
I would also, sorry, Mr. Twombly, if I could just add, people may wonder, because they are adjacent to one another, and several members of the community use both our tennis courts and our basketball courts. The basketball courts are also in a need of replacement at this time. However, we're trying to prioritize the tennis courts. In addition to using, being used by the community, is also used by our athletic teams and for physical education. So we have prioritized that over the basketball courts, but they both are in need of repair, and we're hoping to be able to space it out in a way that the best, if we can repair the courts, that we can then move to the outdoor basketball courts after that.
Yep, that's a very good point because we are trying, trying to do both projects. Originally, we talked about doing both of them in one year, but it would be really expensive. So we decided that we would kind of separate them out. So that's a good point. The next thing, I might need a little help from Chrissy or Alicia, but we're looking to purchase a new literacy program. Right now, we have Reading Street, so this is to replace Reading Street. This would be for the K to five students. So that's, that's a five hundred thousand dollar purchase that we would be looking to do. The next item would be-
Yeah, I just want to, just want to clarify one thing, David, about that. It's actually K through six.
Oops, sorry about that.
And that's okay. And I will be sharing an update on that process during the Assistant Superintendent notes.
Okay, cool. Very good. The next one is the security system, like we talked about earlier. So again, we're working with Perkins Eastman, who is the design architects on the Blanche Ames Elementary School. So what we're trying to do, and you probably have heard us talk about this in the past, we're trying to get everything to kind of match so that we can have like one vendor, one system. So Perkins Eastman is working with us on designing a security system. So obviously, it costs money to design it, so it would be two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars just to design the type of system, to replace the systems that are currently at the high school, middle school, and Richardson Homestead and have it match what we currently have, what we're going to have at the brand new school. And as, as you may remember, Richardson Homestead, they really don't have a high-end type of security system similar to the high school and the middle school. The high school and middle school has like a fob system. And you've got to remember that that system's about fifteen or sixteen years old. So some of that technology is old, um, some of the boxes outside as far as swiping your fobs. Those are, we've had to replace some of those. Some of the technology can't even be placed because it's, it's outdated. So we're looking to start that project. But again, it would be two hundred, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for design work. The next item was a little bit of a curveball that we received. We thought this was going to be a lot cheaper, but again, Perkins Eastman sent us out a estimate, uh, today to do the security system. They had Pam, who works for their consulting, uh, who's a consultant for Perkins Eastman. She came out and met with John Souzer, uh, I think the end of last week or maybe Monday, and they were able to throw together an estimate. Now, again, this is an estimate. We haven't actually gone out to bid because this is a big project. This would have to get bid. And so it came out to three, three million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. But one of the options that we could do for this, and again, I think Alicia and I in the administrative team, we're going to have to go back and talk to Dan Coley from Perkins Eastman and see if we can tease out some of those numbers and maybe split up the project to do one school at a time. Maybe there's things that we could take out of the project that we don't necessarily have to, have to purchase now. So that's the number if we were to go full, like all in, seven, three million dollars. But again, we're going to work with Perkins Eastman and try to refine that number. Obviously, that's a much bigger number than we anticipated.
We literally received that number today, so we haven't had an opportunity to go back and speak to the engineers about if it can be done in steps. A lot of times, uh, projects like this have economy of scale, and if you do them all at once, when it's that large of a price tag, it can be significantly less expensive than if you parcel them between the different schools. So we can't answer that right now because we just got this information today. But we will definitely look into that. I just want to talk about the importance of this, uh, item. We have, David talks about the higher tech systems at Oliver Ames in the middle school because they have key fobs. Unfortunately, uh, that was higher tech about twenty years ago, and they are dysfunctional in many cases. They're not working properly. And because they are computerized, as you know, with the automatic release, sometimes you'll, you'll see in different schools and, and the key fobs that they hold against the, the huge box readers. Those are, uh, those companies that put them in are out of business. And the technology that's used in those boxes is proprietary. And so no other company, by design, of course, no other company can go in and make modifications. And so in order to fortify our system, they would literally need to replace the exterior doors of each building. They need to rewire all of those doors. They need to do a lot of rewiring throughout the buildings. They need to put in new card readers. We have the fobs, as David said, but these are card readers that are far more sophisticated now. They can tell us who's going into what buildings, when they're leaving, times, locations. As you can imagine, over years, schools that operate with both fobs- As you can imagine, over years, schools that operate with both fobs and keys, like the middle school and. And the high school and just keys, Richardson Olmstead. Over the last twenty years, those keys have been distributed and redistributed many times. Employees who may have left. Coaches, possibly service providers, and I certainly could not account for every key for the last twenty years. That makes me very uncomfortable from a security standpoint. In addition, it's very difficult for. Staff to allow someone to enter buildings without that electronic passing. System where they can. Manipulate the doors and the security cameras. This includes the security cameras where they can actually see who's at the door. And it also includes internal cameras, which. I won't get into exactly how many we have currently and where they are for obvious security reasons, but. Because of all of that equipment, it really is. Quite a costly endeavor. However, I'm sure we all agree that security is a priority, especially in these. More challenging times and we can have as many protocols if we want, but if the building itself is not up to standard. That can be very challenging for providing that safety to all students and staff. So we're really. Pushing hard for this item. We expected it to be frankly about half as much as this. And so this is concerning, but we can definitely look into whether we can do it in phases, whether we can do it with. A different provider, if somebody comes in under bid and so forth. So we really just need you to, to approve this. With the knowledge that if anything, it will be decreased and it wouldn't be more expensive than this.
Alright, thanks a lot, Alicia. So the next item on there is. Update the automatic temperature control system. So similar to what the Blanche Ames School has. The other three schools, Richardson Olmstead, the high school and middle school, they have an energy management system which controls. The heating system, the security system, the lighting, so it kind of like goes in together. So these are control boxes. So we were working with one of our vendors and they recommended that we actually upgrade. Our Jaces, they're called, which is basically control boxes. And this will help like the DPW. Sometimes we have meetings or we have performances in the auditorium. And sometimes the heat doesn't go on or the air conditioning doesn't go on. This would allow. The, the DPW or people that are not inside the building to get into the system remotely. So this is an important function. And again, this is fifty thousand dollars. It's something that we could go and get ARPA funds from. Alicia's working with the town manager on that aspect, so that's one thing that could go towards that. The playground, design, bidding and construction management. This is a project that we're really excited about. This is a hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. This is again. Working with Perkins Eastman, but with the caveat that we would also be working with. Traverse Landscaping, who is doing all the landscaping. Designed for the Blanche Ames Elementary School. So again, this would be a contiguous. Landscaping so that whatever's at the Blanche Ames School would be designed. Very similar to what we would put over at the Richardson Olmstead School. So to just do the design, this is not just to put all together. The bidding documents to make sure that we have the proper soil, all the drainage. To do construction management, the all-in total for that would be a hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. We have already met with the recreation department because again. We had thought that CPA funds were going to be distributed. This coming May. However, again, we were told. That tho- those funds won't be available this May, but not until May of twenty-three. So. That definitely falls under CPA. Unfortunately, they're not going to be dispersing any funds for May of, for this year. So that's something we're gonna have to.
That's also something we just had confirmed, so we need to do some more problem solving on that. It is possible that the playground itself could fall under CPA, but we expect that to be quite costly. What we're. Seeing is that a majority of playgrounds at schools are being updated to. Make them ADA compliant. Our playground right now at Richardson Olmstead, for, for anyone that hasn't been there. It's literally on asphalt. There's a small area that's got an absorbent. Footing. It is very rudimentary. Now to today's standards, when it was put in, obviously it was far better than having nothing and we are. Very happy to even have the play structures we have. However, now there's a lot more focus on developmental appropriateness. And physical appropriateness of particular age groups. We learned a great deal about that when we did the Blanche Ames Project and now feel. As though we have both the designer and the, the. Landscape architect and the knowledge to work on something like this for Richardson Olmstead. But what many other districts are doing is making the playground part of a fundraising effort. We do know that Richardson Olmstead has a very robust. And parent organization. They have. Funds that they're looking to invest. It, it wouldn't be the totality of the cost of such a project, but it certainly could be something that they work on for. A couple of years and perhaps make a broader campaign for that. In addition, we could go to the CPA for partial funds. For that project. So this is just the design in order for us to even get to the bidding process and determine where we would go in the future. We need to get this. Portion of the project completed.
Okay, very good. Next one is continue replacing the compressors and rooftop units. So you probably have seen this before in the past years. We've pretty much have set aside fifty thousand dollars the last year or two. For replacing rooftop units so that we don't have to replace all the rooftop units at once. We're kind of doing this proactively. Again, this could be funded through the ARPA funds and again, Alicia's working with the town manager on that.
When David say, saying ARPA funds, I just want to clarify that, that those are the federal funds received. For the. From the, from the government for projects that are just like this, any sort of. Ventilation or anything that may affect COVID mitigation in the future. So ARPA funds is there because that. Those things are ARPA eligible. However, the town administrator determines where those funds are allocated and what is paid for with capital. So we just note that they're eligible, but their determination is made at the town level. We are not recipients of ARPA funds as a school district. We did not receive them. We don't have that money. Those are funds that go directly to a town, to a municipality, who then allocates them to the different departments within that town.
Okay, the next item is the replacement of the sprinkler heads throughout the building at Richardson Olmstead. That would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We did get a quote just to kind of get an idea of how much. That project would cost. We haven't gone out to bid officially. But that would be possibly also eligible for ARPA funds. So again, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that project. I think this project was on the list last year also. And it didn't make it to, to capital. The next item is the replacement of the servary floor.
I just, sorry, I'm really sorry, David. I don't mean to keep interrupting you, but a, a very important point on this that I'm thinking maybe asked is. Is this a fire hazard? And we did meet with the fire department and no, it is not a fire hazard, but it does need. To be fixed before, for maximum performance, which of course is something that's really important to us.
Yeah, that's, that particular project's more like a preventative maintenance. So it's good every like fifteen years, twenty years. To kind of like start going through and start changing the sprinkler heads. It's not that we're having any problems with sprinkler heads, but it's just a good. Preventative maintenance measure. And we do a lot of preventative maintenance. Throughout all our buildings, whether it's on the boilers or on the elevators, doesn't mean that they're broken. We just. You know, in order to keep them up and running so that when you need them, we make sure that we do the appropriate preventative maintenance on them. So. This would be in that category. This is more of a preventative. Maintenance type of project, just like the, the rooftop units. Not necessarily that we're having. Problems with them, but we like to replace them before we do have a problem and then we're kind of scrambling. So that's why that item's on there. The replacement of the servary floor. So that's at Olive Rains High School in the cafeteria. So there's an area where the students actually pick up their food. That's called the servary. And in order to do that, that would be a forty thousand dollar repair. We did do some minor repairs around some of the appliances. And some of the heating elements last year, last summer. But this would be something that we would put a whole entire new. Floor in the servary and that's like forty thousand dollars. The next two are technology items. And I think you have seen this before. This is kind of a, a standard item that we include every year. That would be computers. That's two hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We also have projectors. So that's, again, that's a procurement cycle. That's twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. And an item that we started tracking last year that we included. Would be the replacement of furniture throughout the buildings. As you know, the furniture really takes, there's a lot of wear and tear on the furniture. And again, the Richardson Olmstead School, the high school, middle school, those buildings are starting to get up there in years. So we'd like to try to, again, this is a proactive move. To try to stay ahead of it. So we put aside, we'd like to put aside twenty-five thousand dollars. To replace furniture as needed. So the grand total, this is what all in, this is everything if we were to do this. And again, we don't anticipate doing all this. We're gonna work on that, that quote that we got for the security. But if we were to do all, everything that's on this list, it would be five million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. If we could get CPA funds with it, which again. We can't get CPA funds for this May, it would be five hundred and three thousand, five hundred dollars would, would be paid through CPA funds. If the ARPA funds are available, that, that would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the total between the CPA and the ARPA funds is seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred. And you take that away from the grand total, that brings everything down to four million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars that we would go for capital. So. Hopefully, everybody understood all those numbers and all the information and glaze over. But if you have any questions, I'll try to entertain those, those questions and. I will tell you that we do have a, we tentatively have a capital planning meeting. On either March first or second. I'm waiting for Wendy Nightingale, the town accountant, to get back to us. So once I have that date. We'll have Lynn send an email out to the school committee and they can attend that meeting if they'd like to.
Anyone have any questions? Jackie?
Thank you. Mr. Twombly or Dr. Cabral, maybe you could go over the process a little bit. Just because we vote on this and accept it doesn't mean we get all of this. So if you could just explain how it works a little bit.
Yes. Okay, so.
I don't know.
Sure, go right ahead.
Yeah, so basically, yes. So we create the list. We kind of work with the principals. Working with the DPW to kind of come up with this list and then also talk internally with the administrators here at Fifty Oliver Street. We create the list. We then go to the Capital Planning Committee and as you kind of touched upon, Jackie. Just because we're requesting it doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna receive all these funds. So this is just a list. Hopefully we do, that'd be great, but. Obviously, chances are, you know, they're gonna not be able to fund all that stuff. But there's some creative ways that, again, working. With the town manager, working here at Central Office, we can maybe come up with some creative ways that we can fund some of these projects, but initially we go to the capital. Planning Committee to fund all these projects.
So, right, and as Mr. Twombly is, is alluding to creative. Solutions such as CPA or ARPA funds, and we've identified which ones we think qualify, but. As you heard, CPA is kind of off the table for this year. We then present in, in cooperation with our. Colleagues at the town level in the fire department, police department, health department, town administration's office, et cetera. So. Capital needs are for anything that has a useful life over five years and is over fifty thousand dollars, but. Twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars. So you, as you can imagine, between vehicles for different departments and other facilities needs. There are typically a lot of capital requests and without knowing what those are, we. Then have to come together and think about what funds are available and prioritize, just like we do in the district. We come up with the priorities at each building, but then we have to put it together as a district and determine overall, what are the priorities we can put forward to the town? And so we're going to be combined with the other departments and I, I don't think I've ever. Seen everything that we've tried to secure through capital funds be approved. It's just not possible. There are other needs in other departments. So that is an extremely good point. Never seen it happen actually, but obviously we have to make our needs known and let. People understand what our priorities are and why.
Yeah, I'll just add that you may have seen on the list there, some things we've carried from one year to the next year. Again, some things don't get approved, but then we just carry them over to the following year.
Caroline?
Well, first of all, I would say that unfortunately, most years we've only received a small fraction of what we've requested. But I do have a question unless I missed a reference to this earlier. David, you kept saying CPA is not awarding funds this year, but there. As I understand the CPA law, they are required to fund some things every year. So did you just mean they're not awarding any funds to us? Or did I, did I just something along the way?
Yeah, they're not, from my understanding, they're not taking on any projects, new projects. I know they have some projects that are already in the pipeline. I think they were doing some pickleball courts. So I know they're working on that and I think that. That has required some additional funds that they didn't anticipate. I don't want to speak for them because I don't, I'm not exactly sure. But I mean, they were very cordial to us and we already got our application in there and. Wayne got back to me and said, oh, you guys are all set. You got all your paperwork in. We're gonna probably bring you in in April to kind of talk about. Your project. But you know, basically they have a timeline. If you go onto the town website. And you go on to the Community Preservation Act, there's a whole timeline and there's an application process. That they have. So I think they, they start out that you submit the application. You have to go meet with the park and recreation department. They didn't bring you in to discuss your project. And then I think next November, they start having, they kind of get a little bit more into it in November. And then next May, they'll actually have a whole list of items that they'll bring forward for projects. And again, I don't want to speak for them, but that's pretty much how it works.
But you essentially said they're, they're sort of skipping this May in terms of funding anything and that doesn't. I guess what I would assume then is because they have borrowed money for some projects in the past, that they're able to count the debt that they're paying on those borrowed. Pro, you know, the borrowed money as part of their. Funding of projects because my understanding is they have to. Each category of CPA has to fund something every year. So I'm just guessing here, but maybe it's just the, the debt. Because I, you know, it doesn't seem possible that they could simply skip a year based on my understanding of the Community Preservation Act.
I definitely don't want to speculate, but. As David said, it's possible they had some projects already in the pipeline and they're funding those. It's, they're not obligated to tell us. Why, I'm sure.
But the town meeting has to vote. Town meeting.
No, I know. And I, yes, no, I'm aware of that.
Confused, you know, even if they did have something that cost more, I think they'd have to come back to town meeting to get approval for that.
Oh, they absolutely do. No, they're just telling us that they are not funding or offering new funding.
For any of our projects.
Perhaps, perhaps beyond what they've already committed to. I really don't know, but I'm definitely not saying that they're. Not going to town meeting or they're not giving out any funds this year. That's beyond us. I don't know what they're doing there. I just want to make sure we're not. You don't hear us making that inference. We're not saying that. We're just saying that we are not eligible for funds until next May. That's what we were told. The reason why, I can't tell you that. I don't know that.
No, that help, that's helpful. I mean, what David kept saying is they're not awarding any funds this year as in a, as a sort of sweep, sweeping statement. Obviously, what he meant was. To the school department, so, or to our, you know, to our requests.
I, I think it's kind of like a, almost like a, for lack of a better term, it's like a play on words. It's kind of like, I agree with Alicia. I think. They have projects that are in the pipeline, so they're still funding those projects and some of them may be. A little bit more involved than we, they had anticipated. So they may go to town meeting to get additional funds for those particular projects. I don't know what they're doing. But as far as for us, they're not taking on a new project until next May. I don't know if that clarifies it, but.
No, that makes sense. I just was curious because of the way, you know, it was being framed earlier. I was really confused. Okay.
No, that's good. Sorry if I confuse you, but.
No, I know you knew what you meant, but I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions? Don't worry. So can I get? So can I get a motion to approve the capital plan?
Star second.
All right, roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Weissman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Everybody, have a great night.
Thank you.
Steven.
Okay, um, personnel changes, retirements. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. We have two this evening. The first is, um, Barbara Anderson. Unfortunately, Barbara Anderson's not here this evening, uh, and she, you do not have a ma, uh, I'm listed mask. You do not have a letter for her to read. And so, uh, I will tell, I will give you her background as I usually do. Uh, Barbara Anderson, Adjustment Counselor at Moreau Hall began her career in Easton in nineteen eighty-three as a special education aide at the center school. In nineteen eighty-four, she accepted a position teaching fourth grade at Center. And in nineteen eighty-seven, earned her professional teaching status. After leaving the district in nineteen ninety, she returned, fortunately for us, in nineteen ninety-seven and taught at Center School until two thousand and seven, when she was transferred to Moreau Hall. In two thousand and seven, she took on the role of Adjustment Counselor for grade levels kindergarten through six. Over the next few years, she worked, uh, several, at several of the elementary schools. And in two thousand and nineteen, she became the Adjustment Counselor for Moreau Hall and Parkview. Most recently worked exclusively out of Moreau Hall. She has been with the Easton Public Schools for a total of thirty-two years combined. And she retired on February first. Um, Mrs. Anderson, as you can see, was in many different schools. And I can't even begin to quantify the number of students that she has literally made a life-changing contribution to. It's a very critical role in our school department and she was extraordinarily, um, exceptional at it. We are very sad to see her go, but certainly, as always, wish her a very long, healthy and happy well-earned retirement. She's a great loss to the school district, but, um, we are very thankful to have had her for over thirty years.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Nancy?
Of course. Thank you. Um, Barbara was, uh, taught with me at one point, um, while I was, um, not in her school, but we taught at the same time. And just a wonderful person. And just to reiterate what Dr. Cabral said, she's a huge loss to the system um, with her retirement. She did, she wore so many hats, helped so many children and staff too, you know, came through for everybody. So really gotta miss her and I hope she enjoys her retirement. Barbara, you gotta love it.
Excellent. Anyone else? Okay, um, do we still need to vote on that even though we don't have the letter? Correct? Dr. Cabral?
Yes.
Yes, Barbara Anderson. I apologize that I don't know because I don't have a letter. All right, can I get a motion to accept the retirement of Barbara Anderson?
So moved with regret. Give me O'Neil.
Okay. All right, roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Weissman, yes.
Star, yes.
Great, thank you. All right, Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Uh, Barbara Radcliffe is our next retiree. Mrs. Radcliffe is a special education teacher at Oliver Ames High School. She began her career here at the high school in nineteen eighty-seven. She earned her professional teaching status in nineteen ninety. And in nineteen ninety-two, she was transferred to the middle school. She also left the district in nineteen ninety-five, but fortunately returned in two thousand and seven. She was the co-advisor for the Best Buddies Program for several years. She currently teaches at OA and she plans to retire September fourth, twenty twenty-two, after a total of twenty-three years. Mrs. Radcliffe, again, very pivotal department in our, uh, school district, Special Education Department, was just, or is, fortunately, we have her throughout this, uh, school year, is an extraordinary educator who gives of herself to all of her students. And the Best Buddies Program, I'm sure you're familiar with. Um, she is also, uh, served as the co-advisor of that wonderful program, which pairs a special education student with a peer in the high school and, um, participates in several, uh, wonderful events. So I believe Mrs. Radcliffe was going to join us this evening, but I'm not sure that she's here. If she is, she is using, uh, a different name or a different account. And if she could potentially raise her hand and let us know, because I would love to give her the opportunity to speak. She will also be a huge loss to the district, very fortunate to have had her for over twenty years and thank her so much for her service and dedication to the students of Easton.
Okay, I'm gonna read her letter while you're looking to see if she's there. Dr. Alicia Cabral, Mrs. Teresa Skinner, Mrs. Kelly Kavanoff and the Easton School Committee. Uh, after much prayerful consideration, I've decided to retire on my sixty-seventh birthday, September fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. I thoroughly enjoyed teaching in Easton for a combined twenty-two years. I started here in September of nineteen eighty-seven, when Dr. Bill Simmons recruited me to help start the A-Wing Project Opportunity Program at Oliver Ames High School. I remained in that position for five years and then taught for three years at the Lincoln Street School until I left to start my family in June of nineteen ninety-five. After seven years, I returned to teaching in three different school systems and before happily returning to OAHS in September of two thousand and seven. I have taught for a total of thirty-one years and I have hopefully touched and positively influenced many young lives. I feel that now it is time to explore other areas of interest, including volunteer as well as paid positions. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you all and support throughout my entire, uh, my time in Easton. I leave with many fond memories and well-grounded sense of accomplishment. May God bless you as you continue to serve the children of Easton. Sincerely, Mrs. Barbara J. Radcliffe. Any comments? Nancy?
I did, Barbara was at the middle school for a couple of years and, uh, uh, just what a wonderful human being. She just, uh, radiates helpfulness and, and she truly cares about every, uh, student. When the A-Wing Project started, nobody was quite sure what was gonna happen. So she was quite instrumental in, uh, being a force in that, in that project. So I wish her the best, is gonna love retirement, but just as Dr. Cabral again said, she is going to be missed, but, uh, a wonderful, wonderful person.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Caroline?
Well, first of all, um, that Best Buddies Program has really been a wonderful, a wonderful program for our kids and, but on, really both for the, the kids who have challenges and the kids who have linked up with them to create relationships. Um, so I, I really applaud Barbara for her involvement in that program. And also, I just want to say in general, um, you know, special ed teachers that stick with that, um, that teaching mission for long periods of time are just, uh, in my book, they're just to be admired so very much because it's certainly such important work and also difficult work. So, um, I just wanted to mention that as general, uh, you know, I certainly like Nancy. I hope Barbara has a wonderful retirement.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, can I get a motion to accept the retirement with regrets of Barbara Radcliffe?
Don't move, DeLuca.
Me a second?
Star, second.
Roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Weissman, yes.
Star, yes.
Great, thank you. All right, vote to appoint three members of the school committee to the Professional Improvements Leave Committee. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So, uh, can I just pause for a moment here? If you have sensed my distraction, uh, so we are getting, um, comments in the Q and A. We said at the beginning that comments are taken at public comment. And, uh, at the risk of anyone saying we aren't transparent, I want to make sure that I note that, um, I'm being called rude because I'm not asking, because we're not doing the mask item. Unfortunately, if you are not aware of open meeting laws, the law requires that we put a posted agenda. The posted agenda has the exact number of when the mask discussion is going to take place. People may choose to join the meeting late, knowing where that is. And so in order to try to respect open meeting laws and the fact that people plan accordingly in order to join the meeting, we don't want to mislead anyone and post it later in the meeting, have them show up later, and it's already been discussed. So if you could please stop commenting and, and calling us names, we could continue with the program, get to the masking discussion where it has been noted, which is right before public comment, because we wanted to give an opportunity for people to comment, uh, as much as they would like. And so I would like to continue now, if that's okay.
Thank you. Okay, back to item six. Vote to appoint three members of the school committee to a professional improvement leave committee.
Okay. I, I would also just note, these items are all important and I would hope people would want to pay attention to all of these things and help us with them. So there is something in the educator's contract called the, uh, professional improvement leave. Think of it like a sabbatical, really. And we have, uh, had, or ever since I've been here, which is a decade, we have not had anyone call upon it. However, we do have someone now calling to, uh, with a request to use the professional improvement leave that is provided in the contract. Uh, this is, I believe, a, a very beneficial offering that is in the contract. It is an opportunity for someone in the professional unit to improve their, um, their repertoire, improve their education, improve their experience through, uh, a, an accredited program. We will not be discussing the particular, uh, request tonight because that's, uh, in, uh, certainly, um, have to determine if that is something that's done in public or if that's an executive session item and we're not at the, the point where we in the timeline where we need to have that discussion. However, we are at the point in the timeline where we need to convene a committee. It's, uh, literally called the Professional Improvement Committee. And in the contract, it calls for three representatives chosen by the Easton Educators Association and three members chosen by the Easton School Committee. It also calls for the superintendent to serve as the chair. And so this evening, I'm asking you, uh, to appoint who you would like to represent you. It could be school committee members. It could be others, designees, it could be a combination of such, but your sole responsibility literally is to review any requests made by a professional for an improvement leave. So the, um, it is for, uh, one year. Uh, examples are doctoral programs or certification program. It has to be in a discipline that, in the, the a discipline that, in the opinion of the Professional Improvement Committee, needs to enhance the value of the individual within their current assignment. Or is a program that will be a benefit to the Easton Public School system. So we do have professionals that are looking for opportunities and going to school for things like uh, mental health, for example, now that they see the needs in the district, or they're looking to advance their content area skills, physics, for example, in high school. Uh, and so they take this professional leave, or if you will, sabbatical, where they can be a full-time participant in a program. And then the, the, uh, this also requires them to, when, upon their return, uh, commit to serving the school district for an additional two years. So it is something that the committee can deny or approve based on the presentation of the person looking for the leave um, and its merit in, in helping the students of the Easton Public Schools and improving, uh, our offerings here. Um, and knowing that we will directly benefit from that experience for at least two years after the individual returns to the district. So I am, I can answer any other questions about that or I can, um, move to the vote at this point or suggestions of who you may want to appoint for this committee.
Anyone have any questions? No? Okay. So are we looking for volunteers, Dr. Cabral, or do you have a process for?
I don't have a process. Uh, you can, um, it's not actually at time pressing, that it doesn't have to be done this evening. You can discuss it and determine if you would like designees or if you would like it to be members of the school committee. Uh, you can discuss anyone that you may want to, or a category of person, person that you may want to reach out to. You may perhaps want a, a central office administrator or, um, school administrator, without naming any names, and then we can look into who those people might be. Um, you don't necessarily have to have your vote this evening, but at least process to get us there. And perhaps at the next meeting, you could have a vote so that we could move ahead with the timeline. I think the next date we have to um, convene is in late March. And so you would have plenty of time to do it at your next, um, school committee meeting.
Okay. Does anyone on the committee have thoughts? Nancy?
I would like to volunteer for this committee.
Okay. Caroline, I saw your hand up.
Uh, really more of a, a question. Um, obviously, if, if three people from the school committee want to volunteer, I think we should honor that. But if we don't have three volunteers, uh, I'm wondering if it makes sense to have to at least reach out to the principal of whichever school the individual is associated with to find out if they would be a, a logical addition to the committee and would be willing to serve in that capacity. I, I don't know what kind of, um, commitment there is in terms of the actual work or a number of meetings. I think probably no one knows that yet, but, um, anyway, it's just an idea. If we don't have three volunteers from the school committee, uh, perhaps we could consider the principal of the school that the person is currently assigned to.
Thank you. Well, Jen?
Um, can you, uh, I'm sorry if I miss this. Can you remind me, have we ever had to convene this committee before or is this the first time it's come up?
Not since I've been here and the staff here does not remember it being convened.
Okay.
So I can't say with certainty, but certainly not in my time here.
This is where our thirty-year historian comes in handy.
I, I do think, I do think that we did grant someone that leave. Um, I don't recall at the time that there was a requirement that there be a committee put together. I mean, there was a request for, um, exactly this, a year's, I think a sabbatical is a good representation of what it, it's like. Um, unfortunately, that person actually did not return. And I think there was some sort of negotiation around that because there is a commitment to return for two years. But that was, I'm gonna say at least twenty years ago, maybe fifth, well, yeah, probably more like twenty years ago. So, but I don't recall there being a committee, but it could just be that I wasn't on it and I have erased it from my memory, so.
Is Molly tearing, Jen?
Uh, I would be, yeah, I'd be happy to be on it. Um, I don't know, you know, where Jackie and I are on the negotiation subcommittee. I don't know if that makes it a natural fit the, where you would want that overlap or if you would not want that overlap. So I, I don't know if that's a consideration in either way.
I don't think it is. I think it's whatever you prefer.
Okay. I, I'd be happy to serve on it, but if somebody else is, you know, really feels strongly about it, I'm happy to step back as well. It's not, I, I'm totally neutral.
When are the potential meetings, Alicia? When are the potential meetings, Alicia?
Uh, no, there aren't any potential meetings scheduled. That would be at the discussion of the committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Carolina or Jackie, are you interested?
I'd need to know more about the, sort of the location and the format of the meetings. Obviously, it'll be a, a group decision about when the meetings would be and presumably where, but, um, I do think that if, if a principal were willing to serve, that would be a person that would have a good idea of, you know, what the impact of that kind of, uh, personal development leave would have. So I, I, I would recommend that, you know, at least if principals are willing to serve, that maybe one member be the principal of the school to which the individual is assigned. I don't know, though, Dr. Cabral, what do you think about that idea?
I think it's a great idea. I'm sure you would have at least one principal that would be interested.
Did you want to comment, Jackie? Are you okay?
No, I'm okay with that. If we want to wait and see, um, if the principal of, of this person is interested, then that's, that's fine with me as well.
Okay, so we tend to, we have Nancy and Jen, and then, um, Dr. Cabral, you'll reach out to administrators.
Absolutely.
What's on the March tenth agenda?
Okay.
Everyone good with that? Great, thank you. Okay, item seven, vote to change the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar.
Yes, you see both calendars on here this evening. Actually, this is the time of year that we, um, look at the calendar for next year, like you did last year. It's typically the only one that you vote on. Um, we have made changes before, and, um, I, of course, checked that, uh, with legal counsel about whether it needs to be voted on. Um, the initial one does. If you remember, we changed two days to be half-days for common planning and, uh, planning across the schools for our staff. One is tomorrow and one is March eighteenth. Um, I was told by legal counsel that we don't necessarily have to vote on it. However, I, I don't see any reason why you could not, uh, just to make sure uh, that everyone is satisfied with how the process happened. So, um, you initial, or you, uh, previously expressed um, support of that, and so this evening is for you to vote on that if you wish to keep that as part of the calendar for this year.
Any comments, or do you want to just move right to vote? Okay, can I get a motion to accept the calendar changes of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school calendar to include the two half-days?
Wasman, so moved.
Are you a second?
Anil, second.
Roll call vote.
Anil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Our, yes.
All right, excellent, thank you. Um, eight, discussion of possible, nope. Yes, discussion of possible vote on return to play policy. First reading, so it's actually not going to be a vote, so it's just a discussion tonight. I don't know, Jen, do you want to take it? I know you did kind of hack the edits.
Sure, so, um, so as discussed at the last time we met, we were presented with the details of the protocol itself. So, uh, what was included in the packet is the, uh, the actual policy that would go in our manual. So Chrissy had reached out to council, they'd provided a draft. We made some edits to the draft that are in the red line, and those were, um, uh, accepted by council. So just, uh, clarifying some of the language. So in the packet, there are two versions, one where you can see the edits that we made to the draft that was provided by council, and one that has the final version. And then the, uh, because this, this isn't an M A S C, um, template policy, um, uh, we went with, uh, or I went with, um, putting a file reference on here that just doesn't conflict with anything that's in the manual. And M A S C does not have, um, a policy, uh, a file of J J I G. Um, J J I F and J J I F dash R are the two concussion-related documents. So this comes under the athletic section of the policy manual and would follow the concussion return to play protocol. That seemed like a logical place to put it, but it's certainly open for discussion as well.
School committee have any comments? Questions, additional edits? Is everyone satisfied with this in the first version? And we can move to, um, do a second reading and vote on March tenth? Yes? You good with that, Jackie?
Yeah, I think the edits were really, um, it kind of incorporates some of the comments from Dr. Bornstein, so I think they work well.
All right, Nancy, you're.
I'm, I'm sorry, it's March seventeenth, isn't it?
Thought we had the tenth. I don't know, I can double check whenever our next meeting is.
You're right. My apologies, it's the tenth, yep.
Okay. Nancy, do you have your hand raised?
I just, yeah, I was just gonna say thanks, Jen, and, uh, for doing all that, and, um, I think it looks really, it looks good.
I agree. I agree, thank you very much. All right. So, we will put that on the next agenda for a vote. All right, discussion of two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, or twenty-three school calendar first reading. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. You have these copies. I will note that the primary was just put out by the state, uh, primary election, uh, primary voting, and that is going to be on September sixth, the day after, uh, uh, not Memorial Day, Labor Day, excuse me, day after Labor Day. And so we need to consider that when we are, uh, looking at the calendar. We don't necessarily, uh, need to have all staff out of the district. So it could be, uh, a staff day, for example, but we do prefer, and the town clerk's office certainly prefers, if we have no students in the district when we're having voting, just to make sure that voting can go smoothly, that residents can easily park and maneuver within the buildings and not be inhibited to, uh, cast their votes in any way. So that is, uh, what we've been asked to consider. You will see that we already took into consideration the November eighth date of the elections and made that a professional development day. So you will just need to consider, uh, what adjustments you want to make to the drafts you were given to account for the September sixth primaries. And Mrs. Pruitt, I don't know if you want to discuss any of the differences. They're typically the start dates, but you can talk about the other dates that you, uh, worked on with Mrs. Shine in terms of, uh, conferences and professional development days and so forth.
Thank you. So we did take into account, um, you know, ensuring that our, there was equity as the amount of days, um, for each period. Um, so it is around between fifty-eight and sixty, sixty-two, you know, give or take a few days, um, between each term. So that is taken accounted for. We also looked to make sure, because I know last year we had conflicts with the start of kindergarten and preschool around some of the Jewish holidays. So that does not conflict this year, um, as they are later in September and the beginning of October. Um, and so that's the, we, we are also looking at having our professional development day, as Dr. Cabral just stated, during the November election and the day before, um, the Friday before the Martin Luther King Junior holiday.
All right, any school committee comments?
Um.
Nancy?
Yeah, so I, um, so the, the idea is that you want, um, September sixth closed at the high school, correct?
Well, we can't, the, the problem is we can't really close one school. Uh, it has to be district-wide, but that, that is the request from the clerk's office, yes.
Okay, so, and Desi is still not, they won't allow a remote day. So, uh, what I was gonna suggest is September sixth would be a remote, you know, learning day for high school kids.
I see.
Everybody else goes cool.
It's a creative solution. Unfortunately, you're right, it isn't allowed right now.
And unfortunately, because last, that last, that ice storm day would have been a nice day to have a remote day, but that's okay.
Exactly.
All right, so just that, all right, that was the only thing I was asking. And, uh, the other question I was going to ask about, um, they do that science thing. I don't know if it's been done the last couple of years at Arrow from the high school, is that still?
The Science Olympiad, yes. That's in March, and that's accounted for with, uh, a half-day.
Yep.
Oh, during conferences, okay, thank you.
Jackie?
So what, so what are you thinking of for September sixth? Are you thinking of switching a P D day for that day? What, what, what?
Honestly, I, I got this information right before the school committee meeting. Uh, we could could theoretically, you could, um, make the sixth an extension of the Labor Day weekend. Uh, for this one time only, we don't typically do that, of course. Um, and then just continue on with the schedule and add a date to the end of the year. The problem with the professional development is that we only have two. And one, we really need to keep on the eighth even more than the primaries because it's, it's the, it's the elections. And the other one, we typically try to put in January only because we literally are not all together with staff, except for these two instances. And to see them in September, November, and not ever have an opportunity to be together with the entire staff again uh, is very difficult in terms of messaging and, and sharing information and so forth. So it is a possibility you could have the sixth is going to be a day off. Or we could I, I, what I wouldn't recommend, to be honest, is, is I would like to try to avoid starting uh, the seventh or the eighth, because that really extends, uh, the school year quite a bit. You can see that draft three, um, has the beginning for, at August thirtieth and August thirty-first, thirtieth for staff and thirty-first for, um, grades one through twelve. If you were to do something like that, which is the earliest scenario, and then add the sixth as a possible day off, then you aren't extending the end of the school year, um, excessively. It's just different considerations. I don't have an official recommendation.
The really draft two, we can't even consider right now because it has the start date on the sixth.
Well, uh, you can consider it, but you would need to move the sixth to the seventh. And that, again, you can see the end of the school year, if we have five snow days, would be the twenty-third. Uh, that only leaves a few more days in the event of anything extraordinary happening. Uh, we had three days this year with no school because of extensive power outages. So it's, it's very difficult to say that, that that wouldn't. W- we can't go beyond, uh, the thirtieth. What happens, just to, to recap for people that might not be aware, we have to have all of our time on learning done by June thirtieth of every year. If we don't, uh, first of all, we can't pay our staff. We can't, uh, because it goes to the next fiscal year on, uh, July first. And so what happens is, and this happened to me, actually, when I was a teacher years ago, what happens is when you get to a point, usually in the winter, where you find you are up to the thirtieth or a budding it, or you need to go an extra day, and it's the July first, you don't have a choice. And so we have to start doing things like eliminating April vacation days or eliminating, um, Saturdays. I, I've, I taught on a Saturday at least once when something like this happened before. And obviously, those are, uh, far less, um, preferential um, choices to make. So if we can avoid that as much as possible, that's, that's probably the only recommendation I would make. If we can, uh, pro- avoid draft two, um, which is, which has the latest start. So I, I would say probably our best bet for this scenario would be drafts one or three. Um, and that's if you have, um, a no-school day on the sixth because of primaries.
Does administration have any feelings or preferences? Typically, they have had one way or the other.
It's, we, honestly, it's the same. They prefer, uh, earlier starts if possible um, for a multitude of reasons, um, a lot of different testing that's done. Uh, it, it provides more time with the students. Um, it provides more time with the seniors because they leave at, it's, their date is already set, regardless of when the rest of the students get out. Um, so they typically prefer the earlier start date.
And we'll also share with you that draft three is similar to this current school year where we, um, the staff come back on the Tuesday and the students come back on Wednesday.
So with that draft, though, if we make the sixth a no-school day, they would be going until
I'm sorry, which one, draft three?
On draft three?
Yeah.
They would be going to, I just want to make sure I'm reading it right, um. They would have to come back on the you know, that last day.
They would go until the twelfth, but if we had our snow days, they would go until the twentieth. That would leave, um, eight days after that for any additional, um, exigent circumstances.
Well, that's coming back on a Monday, but if we look at draft one, just talk me, let's talk through that.
Well, no, it would be the twentieth because, uh, June nineteenth is Juneteenth, and that's a holiday.
Yeah, but that's with seven snow days, right?
Five snow days.
No, the typical five.
I mean, five snow days. Right now, the last day of school's the ninth, so they would have to come back.
It would be the twelfth, correct?
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, sorry.
Wait, that's okay. And then in draft one, if we take the September sixth out, they would be coming
The thirteenth.
The thirteenth, so it would be a Tuesday, so it's really, either way, they go to the next week.
Yes.
Benefit would be that draft three has the earlier start.
Yes, but honestly, it's very rare that we have no cancellations in, in an entire school year. So they're probably gonna have to come the next week anyway.
Shell?
Yes, sorry, Caroline.
Just one person's opinion, but I do like draft three the best because I do think it gives us more flexibility with, well, we've seen the results of climate change and other factors. So, um, I think the earlier start, as Dr. Cabal said, gives us more leeway. Also, it keeps the kids kind of a little more steadily in school earlier on, which is, you know, I don't know if anyone remembers the research that Lori Hahn did, but it was pretty striking. But it seemed like, um, the more steadily kids were in school in the earlier months, uh, the higher the test scores were, strangely enough, in the spring. So that's another factor, just to, to look into.
You want to have any thoughts? Jen?
Um, can we, can we check and see, um, if my calendar from twenty eighteen is correct? The primary that year was Tuesday, the fourth, and that looks like it was a school day. So I'm wondering, voter turnout's typically not really big primary.
Well, I
I know the clerk, I know what the clerk's preference is, I, I, and I totally understand that. And, and certainly that makes sense for the regular election day.
Providing you with, um, the request.
And I think it's
We have done it. We have done it. You are correct. We have done it. Uh, it has not, um, it, it is a very firm request right now, um, but you certainly, the decision is in your hands.
Could we, as part of this, could we get, I, I know, you know, obviously, we've had a change in the principal at OA, but maybe, certainly plenty of the staff have been around administrative staff. We could get their feedback if they recall that day as to whether or not it was very disruptive to the students or we had, you know, massive issues with parking or anything like that.
I don't think the concern is with, uh, is on our end. I think the concern is that it, uh, it could perhaps discourage voters or create inconveniences for voters. um, trying to make their way to the polls. We have, you know, cordoned off parking lots for voter parking and, you know, we, we can do it. We've, we've gotten through it, but um, it's more of a concern for um, voter participation.
Which I, I understand and I've, but I've been there, I've been at the polls on those days and there tend to not be, from my recollection, many issues with, with parking, et cetera, because turnout is not overwhelming and it tends to be spread out throughout the day. You have a couple of peak times. So maybe it would make sense to consider, I, I don't know, delay or whatever, but um, maybe just something to consider. You can think about it.
Then a teacher in a school being used in the polling stations and be really disruptive.
Fair enough.
Well, I don't know. I actually was going to reinforce Jen's point in a, well, sort of in a different direction. I think it's actually helpful for students to see voters going to the polls. I think it's actually a sort of mini civics lesson. Um, so and I, I, my experience is that the primary um, voting is very low, uh, very low volume. So um, you know, this is, is kind of interesting because we used to, to not close at all. And then we did agree to close for the national uh, you know, the regular election. And now this has sort of moved on to a request to close anytime there's a primary. I have mixed feelings about that. Now, Michelle, can you kind of elaborate? I mean, what circumstances were you faced with when there was voting in a school that you were teaching in?
We, it's, it's just hard. There's a lot of no access for students. Um, I mean, obviously I haven't been at OA when this has happened. This is in different district. Um, you know, the machines, the equipment, the extra people, you have people coming in and out of the schools that you don't necessarily know. It's just, it, it became, you know, there were areas of the school the kids had to avoid.
They were very efficient. The time that we had voting, when the kids were still in class, they just had that one area that they could block off. And the kids went, I mean, admittedly, the gym was not in use and I think they're actually using both gyms now. Um, but I feel like it went really smoothly and it was not disruptive. Obviously, I wasn't in the school teaching and I wasn't a student, so I, I can't address how disruptive it was for them, but it seemed very simple to just cordon off that one section. And um, voters were, you know, just going in that door of the gym. Uh, I don't know.
We are fortunate that it is. I'm sorry?
They've had them coming in the atrium. I don't know if they plan on continuing that.
Yes, I was just gonna say, we, we are fortunate that it's the end of the building and so we are able to keep it from the, the classroom proper area. Um, however, it does take the uh, obviously, it takes the gyms offline for the day as uh, as Caroline noted.
And I mean, there is another factor. I believe we're going to seven precincts now. I don't know if that's happening for, I guess it is happening for that primary. So uh, you know, I, I don't know what kind of I mean, ostensibly, that's, well, actually, that's because of an increase in, in total voter, the numbers of voters. But um, I don't, it's, it's not a huge increase in the number of voters. I mean, they're, they are going to seven precincts instead of six, but um, I'm not sure that that would really be a significant factor.
You could, I could certainly invite, get more information from the town clerk or invite her to come to your next meeting. You could vote at that meeting, but we really would not wanna go any further than the next meeting. We really wanna publish the calendar as soon as possible for feed people to make plans for next year.
Nancy?
Uh, I think that we should just keep school open primaries, uh, primaries. Um, do something in the parking lot that day that, you know, the kids are someplace else and the gym classes and all that. You know, they meet in the auditorium that day, do not physical things, of course, but it's a study hall, whatever.
Hopefully, hopefully good weather, yeah.
So I, I think, I think uh, draft three, I really like, although um, you know me, I'm a after Labor Day kinda girl, but my fellow colleague, my previous fellow colleagues do like starting in August and they would like earlier in June the better. So um, I, I don't think the primaries are a big deal. I think, and it's happened before, and I know what Caroline is saying, that the kids are gonna observe the process. No, they're not. They, nobody sees, you go in the gym and
That's a good point. No, you're right.
And when, maybe what you were also talking about is when we were voting at all different places. Like, you know, different schools or the Knights of Columbus, they had all the different voting areas around town. Now we're in one place, well, that was nice of us to do that or whoever made the decision, it's great. But I don't think we should close school to thirty-five hundred kids for the primaries or to the high school kids or whatever. Okay, I'm done.
The challenge for parents too. I mean, it's yet another day that they didn't necessarily be expecting to, to have to be home with their kids.
That's true. All right. So sounds to me, I think I'm hearing draft three to move to the next agenda for a vote. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, either way, we take a vote on which draft next time, right?
But don't we have to pick kind of the ones we wanna?
I think we're just discussing now what our person, you know, our initial reactions are, but I believe, Dr. Cabral, you can correct me, but I believe we still just vote which, the, the actual vote is uh, to accept one of the drafts.
Right, you have, um, you have in the past, in this first meeting, reduced it down to one or two choices. You certainly could eliminate any if you felt you wanted to do that, or you can just consider them all again next time.
That's a good idea. I think that the one that would have school starting on the seventh is um, just not a good option.
Two looks like a non-starter to me.
I agree with that as well.
Just so you know, the agenda does not have a vote on it. It just says discussion of twenty-two, twenty-three.
They don't have to vote on eliminating calendars. They just have to vote on the final one.
Okay, so do you wanna move in for our consideration, probably draft one or three next time? Or do you wanna just say draft three?
I mean, we can just move them and then next week, in next meeting, we just vote, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you. Item ten, discussion of two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school committee meeting schedule, first reading, so there's no vote.
Yes, the school committee's schedule?
Yeah, did you wanna?
No, it's just your schedule. If you choose to make any changes or adjustments, or if you wanna accept it as is.
So it's the first reading. What do you guys think? Is there any changes you want made?
I have no suggestions.
No, I like the six o'clock time.
Okay, I do too. Nancy, are you good with this? Yeah, and Caroline? All right, moving right along. Thank you. All right, COVID update, Dr. Cabral.
Yeah, I think um, Mrs. Pruitt, do you have a preference to keep it separate? I think we can put it together with the discussion and possible vote on the mask mandate since it's included in the presentation unless there's additional information you wanted to give today.
The only thing that I wanted to just share with the school committee is that um, our testing program is underway and it is running smoothly. So I just wanted to let you know, our, we do have additional staff from the C I C. And they are being extremely helpful in distributing the tests to students and staff. And also just to remind the community, since we do have a large audience today, that um, you can enroll in the testing program at any time. It does not close. So if you would like, you know, if your child had COVID, um, after that ninety day period, you want to enroll them, you definitely can. So that you just have to go and fill out the form and then the next time that they, that the tests are ordered, we will be ordering a kit for your child.
And that's weekly testing kits. We send them home in two weeks at a time. They go home with the child and they're administered in the home by parents or the child themselves.
So that's it for COVID? All right, so before we start the discussion of possible vote on the mask mandate, there's a lot of new people and I'm just gonna read this. School committee can bear with me one more time about how we're handling um, questions tonight, just so everyone knows. Um, we're taking questions via the chat feature at the bottom of your screen and we'll make sure, make sure to include your full name and address. We'll do our best to answer questions, however, we will not re-read questions that have already been answered. Also, because we anticipate the potential for a high um, volume of questions, everyone's allowed to submit one question. Once we get through everyone having the opportunity to be able to ask one question, if time allows, we'll go back and answer some more questions. All right, all right, thank you. So discussion and possible vote on the mask mandate. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you, Mrs. Pruitt. If you can, please project our slides for the evening. Thanks. You can move to the next slide, please. Thank you. So I wanted to give a timeline of the events. There seems to be a lot of confusion about what has or hasn't taken place uh, in, since the announcement. On Thursday, January twenty-seventh, the school committee looked at the calendar upcoming. We had two meetings, one on February tenth and one on February seventeenth. We decided that, or I, I recommended, and then the committee decided that because the February tenth meeting was only two weeks from January twenty-seventh. And we really didn't want such a huge stretch between February seventeen, uh, between February tenth and March tenth. That would be prudent to eliminate the February tenth meeting and keep the March, uh, excuse me, the February seventeenth meeting, which of course is this evening. So that meeting was canceled. Of course, on Wednesday, February ninth, we were notified as superintendents that the commissioner wanted to speak with us for just a couple of minutes. We had a brief call with the commissioner. He was, he took no questions. He simply um, gave the information that I'm going to provide in a moment. And shortly after his phone call, the governor made the announcement of uh, of um, giving the authority to have masking mandatory or not to individual districts instead of at the state or DUCY level. Uh, there were, there was some information that we needed. I will come to that in the next few slides. I don't think this is the most updated version, Mrs. Pruitt, of the, of the slides, but um, in upcoming slides, there are some um, the information, if this, if this isn't the one that maybe you just got off of the Google Drive, you might want to upload that one because there have been some changes.
Okay, uh, it, is it in the um, folder? Because I just went on the one that I had originally done.
No, it's not. It's, it was sent to you directly. I apologize for that.
I didn't see that, okay. Hold on one second.
My apologies.
Hey, I, I don't have it in my inbox.
It was shared with you. Send you copy right now. So uh, obviously, this information is uh, where I left off, it said information needed. There are a lot of things that go on behind the scenes and when it, it, when you're going to make a decision or recommend a decision and the school committee is going to make a decision, we have to provide all of the information in terms of implementation. We have to be sure that we've considered everything and that we can implement it successfully here. And so there was some information that we needed to gather. We were able to do that in a very quick amount of time. And uh, so that's where I left off on the slides.
Yes, it was, it was, it, it was the correct one that I had posted. It was um, just on a, the other districts was, yeah, okay.
Okay, so it says, instead of on the next slide, it says info needed coming up. So in the, in a few, can you go back for a second, please? Thanks. So it says uh, that it's coming up. And so I'm going to list that information so people just get a small insight in what, into what it is we have to look at in order to make such recommendations. So on the very next meeting possible, which is this evening, the school committee had their meeting. On February twenty-eighth is the first possible day of optional masking. People have asked, why have other districts already announced what their decision is? That is simply a coincidence in their scheduling. If they had a meeting last week, uh, they were able to do this. It is literally unlawful for the school committee, unfortunately, to have any kind of conversation to be prepared for things like this. Um, and so this is their first opportunity to have a conversation. This is their first opportunity for me to give a recommendation um, and to show them what work we've gone into to try to come to that recommendation. And so uh, there are many districts that are also doing it this evening. Some are doing it uh, even tomorrow to try to get them in before vacation. They've made emergency meetings. Or they have already reached the eighty percent that was necessary to have optional masking. So I just wanna explain that we are on the same exact timeline as everybody else. We are literally one week out from the announcement. And at our very next scheduled meeting, which is why we're able to do it tonight. Okay? What was it that DUCY um, decided? Well, they said in consultation of the, the risk with medical experts and state health officials, they took into consideration the different mental health, physical health risks for children and um, young adults. They also noted the high level of vaccination rates right now, as well as the widespread availability, availability of COVID nineteen testing for all students and staff. They still did have some recommendations for uh, masking. They said that there is a strong recommendation of continued protocols for responding to COVID nineteen scenarios. Those are the scenarios that are currently in our playbook. So if someone is uh, positive, for example, for COVID nineteen, they are required to wear a mask uh, for a certain number of days. They're strongly recommending those product, protocols stay in place. And also, they say that unvaccinated and or immunocom- immunocompromised individuals uh, should continue wearing a mask. That, um, that is from DUCY. The continued requirements going forward, there's mandatory masking for all on any school bus, whether it's an adult uh, or a student. That is a federal order and the state does not have the authority to usurp that. There's strong support for those who choose to continue to mask. That seems obvious, but we um, the commissioner wanted to note that that should be uh, priority is supporting anyone that still chooses to wear a mask. And that we must continue to monitor our local data um, to be prepared for any adjustments that might be necessary at the local level. This is some of the documentation they provided. You can see specifically what I was talking about with the protocols after a five-day isolation. Days six through ten, people need, uh, need to wear a mask. Unvaccinated individuals continue to wearing masks, et cetera. All right, what were those considerations we needed to do uh, in the last week? Well, you have to remember, we, we have to implement it. We don't, we can't just make a decision. We have to be able to follow through on it. So we had to look at Eastern specific and EPS specific data and trends, which we did and I'll share. We had to look at the implications at every grade level and in every program. We have very varied programs between uh, cooking, we have three-year-old children. Uh, we have significant special needs. We have children who are medically compromised. We had to go through every scenario and make sure that uh, if we were gonna make a decision for optional masking, it had to work uh, everywhere, or we had to come up with ways to mitigate any effect in a certain grade level or program. Uh, we had to look at music guidance, chorus, wind instruments and performances has been uh, particularly a concern due to aerosol transmission. And so, we've had to research all of the local, of the state and, and national music organizations to see if they had done any further testing or made any requirements. We had to wait for the MIAA guidance for sports. We received that on February eleventh. That is, MIAA, of course, is the organization that determines our sporting. And for us, it's the Hakamak League, our sporting requirements. And certainly, we wanted to make sure that as a school district, we would be able to align with whatever they came out with. We also wanted input from administrators, our school nurses, our therapeutic staff, our educators, parents, and the Easton Health Department. We also wanted to make sure we had a capacity for effective implementation. Are we going to be able to monitor who should be wearing masks, who shouldn't be wearing masks and so forth? Also, procedural issues, even writing the agenda. I have to guide the school committee correctly. Was this something that needed an official vote? Did we need to have a public hearing? How did it have to be written on the agenda? These are all things that we needed to determine in order to counsel the school committee appropriately. So, we've done all of that for you this evening. Here's our data. You can see that while we've had eight hundred and thirty-eight positive cases for students and a hundred and seventeen for sta- for staff total, this week, we're down to eleven students and three staff. You'll remember just a few weeks ago, we were literally over two hundred and eighty cases a week. And so, we've had that sharp decline that we've talked about. This was predictable. We, we predicted that there would be a spike after the Thanksgiving break and that there would be another spike after the winter break. But you will see that in the next slide, I think, that that was far more than we had anticipated. That red spike, the blue line, first of all, is last school year. You can see, yes, there was a definite spike. It was our highest ever after winter break. But we certainly couldn't have expected the, the spike that we got this year as a result, of course, of the Omicron variant and lingering Delta variant. So, what you will see, I have down at the bottom, is that this week, last, last year, February vacation was a week earlier than it is this year. Excuse me. However, this year, it's on, it's the week of February sixteenth. And the two weeks after that, which are generally the transmissible weeks, so the weeks that we tend to see a spike. You can see that right after the eleven twenty-four, we had a spike, which was Thanksgiving week. And then, of course, the holiday week, twelve twenty-two started vacation. We had a big spike after that and the two weeks after that. So, if we're looking at last year and we're looking at trends, we do see that after the February vacation, and this is also true after the April vacation, which you can see if you look a little further down the line at April thirteenth, April twentieth and April twenty-seventh, we literally had an increase of two or three cases. And then, it went down. The, the week right after February vacation actually had a slight decrease. And then, it went up, maybe two students went down again, or fa- faculty members. So, they, the, the data trends show us that the spikes were far less than they were after the holidays. Now, of course, we didn't know that this year, the spikes would be a lot higher. But if we're looking at our trends from last year, what we are not predicting is a significant surge after February vacation. Obviously, we can't say that with any scientific certainty, but we're just going by the short longitudinal data we have from last year. You can skip that, I just showed that. And then, the positive cases by grade span. Again, we only have up until this week. So, you can see that this is, however, trending downward, excuse me, as would be predicted by last year's data. And so, all of the data lines are projecting downward, except grades nine through twelve. I think we might have had an increase in one or maybe two students from last week, and that's it. So, they're all trending down. The specific programming that I said we had to check into, DUCY does not preside over pre-kindergarten. That's actually EEC, the Early Education and Care, Department of Early Education and Care. They don't, they, to this day, don't have a recommendation be- beyond their September two thousand twenty-one guidance that says optional masking for ages two to four. Our preschool, preschool students are ages three and four. So, that hasn't changed. The MIAA on February eleventh said that their mask-wearing protocols will end, that they are going to adhere to the host school and venue-specific restrictions. So, very much like the commissioner, they're giving it to a local control, which just means that depending on the venue, our students could, you know, if we had mandatory masking here, it doesn't mean that anywhere else or everywhere else has a optional masking. In terms of the music programs, which was also the, the highest concern, as we said before, amongst the aerosol spreading, the International Coalition of Performing Arts has put out a recent statement in February regarding mask instruments, covers, distancing and rehearsal times. The MMEA, which is the Massachusetts organization, has not yet updated their guidance. They are saying that they, when distances can't be maintained, that masks should be mandatory and there should be use of instrument covers. They also give recommendations of distancing and rehearsal times, a certain number of minutes that students can rehearse indoors if they're X feet apart and then a certain amount of minutes if they're even further apart. And we've, of course, shared that guidance with our music department.
Dr. Cabral, before we move on, I just want, I've been, I'm looking through the slideshow and it's not addressed. I do want to just address that, um, the additional continued requirement for masking that DUCY stated was in our health offices, because they are considered to be healthcare facilities.
Thank you, that's also true. So, our buses is a federal mandate and then our health offices are considered health centers. And so, nurses and anyone who goes into the nurse's office would be required to wear a mask per DUCY mandate. Thank you. So, this is the Easton Public Schools recommendation for your consideration this evening. We recommend optional masking for all students and staff for, starting February twenty-eighth. Why not March is a question that several people have shared. I understand the concern. I understand that we just experienced a, I don't think traumatic is too, is too dramatic a term of what we went through in the school department with two hundred and eighty cases a week, absences and staff missing and sick children. And it was extraordinary for us to handle. And so, I can understand the concern. However, as you saw from our data, we, we just don't have the data that would support that we anticipate such a spike after the February vacation. And I believe that from what the commissioner has said, he, that is the same data on the statewide level that he's seeing, that he's using in his determination as well. This includes optional masking for physical education, which, again, was a, was a, a area of concern when COVID first began. Pre-kindergarten, performance audiences in all sports and activities and audiences, as well as school visitors. We are looking to follow the guidance from the International Music Association that says mandatory masks for singing and bell covers for instruments when in close proximity. In a meeting with Mr. Benson, he felt both of those were prudent in the current environment. However, based on larger distancing, they may not be needed. So, for example, a large performance in some of our biggest performance spaces, like the Dalrymple Auditorium, for example, or, or outdoors, it may be possible for masking to be optional. That's something that you could consider. We are looking for strict adherence to the current COVID protocols in the place playbook, which include where masking is mandatory. So, for example, in the playbook, when it says that a person who is positive must isolate for five days, if they no longer have symptoms or fever, they can return to school on day six, but they must wear a mask up to and through day ten. And on day eleven, they can have optional mask-wearing again as long as all symptoms have completely subsided. We are asking for mandatory family and individual reporting of symptoms, illness, testing and results. I, I would hope that that request for mandatory reporting would be obvious. But in order for us to maintain a safe environment for everyone, there, we have to remember, there's still significant concern about people or from people who don't feel like masking should be optional, who have concerns for their own personal safety. And so, certainly, when anyone shows symptoms that are in alignment with COVID, when they know that they have a positive case or when they have been tested positive, that they are sharing that. The expectation is that they are sharing that with the health department at their child's school. Of course, we, we have to follow the federal mandate of masking on buses. We are providing a strong recommendation for continued masking for unvaccinated and/or immunocompromised individuals. Strict support for masking individuals. We will not have tolerance for anyone that feels as though they are targeted in any way because they choose to continue to wear a mask. It's a personal choice. We obviously have to remember that some people have compromising conditions that they certainly don't need to disclose to anyone else. Or, if they just for any reason feel that they are more comfortable wearing a mask, they have a, a, a parent that wants a child to wear a mask, we will absolutely support anyone that choose to, chooses to continue masking if this is approved. We want to avoid disclosing individual medical information. I know that kind of looks funny. Why would we do that? Well, unfortunately, sometimes, I'll give you the example I gave of days six to ten. If we find that a student that had COVID is perhaps not complying with wearing a mask while they are still technically contagious in days six to ten, if they're not wearing a mask in school, we will have to ask students to put on their masks, wear their masks. We don't like to do that because unfortunately, it inadvertently may give away information that that student has had COVID. And we strive in every way to make sure that no student's personal information or medical information is disclosed. But we're gonna need people to comply with those requirements. And we will continue mit- mitigations that we have in place now. We're gonna continue them. I'll, I'll detail them in a moment. And date, close data monitoring in coordination with the Easton Health Department. If we need to make adjustments, we are going to move on that immediately. We see, for example, a more significant spike after vacation or at any particular time, whether it's in town or whether it's in our schools or one school. We're going to be watching that so that we can make adjustments if we need to. And I thought there was another, another bullet there, but perhaps not. Our current and continuing mitigation efforts include the fact that vaccinations are readily available now to anyone that wants them. Easton, uh, the town of Easton has been extraordinary, in my opinion, in terms of offering several and convenient clinics for vaccinations, for boosters, even for testing. We've had several of these in the school department to make it very easy for parents, when they're picking up their child, to get a vaccination if they so choose, for parents, for staff to get vaccinations. So, we are confident that we are offering many more of those. Weekly COVID testing for all students and staff. We have that now, as Mrs. Pruitt just explained, for anybody that wants it. You can sign into that program at any time and we will start sending those home with your child. The reason I have to the end of the school year and not April is because the state is providing those tests until April. But we worked in conjunction with four other neighboring districts to purchase a patter- a palette of tests so that we can continue to test at least our staff for the remainder of the school year. I don't know at this time if we'll have enough for students that want them, but we can at least provide them to staff for the remainder of the school year. Quality of air purification systems. Every occupied space in every one of our buildings either has a MERV thirteen filter filtration system or it has an air purification system with the highest level of air purifier. They're literally hospital-grade and we have had those for the entire year. We continue to replace those filters at twice the replacement rate. So, for example, if they need to replace, be replaced every six months, we're replacing them every three months. The disinfection, disinfection regiment we have is extremely good. We were amongst the first districts to purchase electrostatic sprayers. We had them before the town had them and we were gladly sharing them. This is something that we will continue using. It's one of the best ways to be able to make sure that we can cover all surfaces thoroughly. We have hand washing and hygiene, uh, personal hygiene campaigns with our littles in terms of continuing to show them how to wash their hands properly, having the soap and the disinfectant, hand disinfectant readily available and talking to them again continuously about not touching their face, their eyes, their mouths. Social distancing wherever and whenever possible. Whenever an educator has a choice of more space, they are going to exercise that. We don't always have that option, however. But certainly, whenever there's a choice, we will maximize the space, maximize the spaces that we have. The same is true of opening windows and bringing students outside, whenever and wherever feasible. When, when the weather is cooperative, when we have spaces that we can safely bring students outdoors to and conduct courses and classes with, with the same level of quality and rigor, we certainly will do that.
That's it.
And that's it. So, that's our recommendation for your consideration. You certainly can take, you can reject it in its entirety. You can accept it in its entirety. Or, you can certainly take portions of it that you feel most comfortable with. This is entirely your decision. I will say that most decisions that take place in the school department are the decision, final decision of the school committee. This or, or issues like this of a public health concern can be overruled by the Board of Health. I did contact them, of course, and invite participants to join us this evening. They do not have a recommendation yet because they have not yet met as a board on this topic. But if they decided to overrule a decision for optional masking, that is something that they do have the authority to do for a public health issue such as this.
I have a question. I am trying to understand the difference between not allowing singing without a mask but allowing cheering and yelling and whatnot in one of the gyms at a sports event.
What I'm not gonna probably be able to do for you tonight is give you the justification behind the other professional organizations like the MIAA. Unfortunately, I, these are two different organizations, the International Music Association and the MIAA. And in our classes, typically speaking, the masking, which is why I said in a larger performance arena, you may not need it. Typically, if we're singing in our classrooms, they're a lot smaller. We don't have in every building, large music rooms for our students to sing in, for example. And so, when the proximity is close, the recommendation of the International Music Organization is to mask. But outdoors or larger venues, that may be something that Mr. Benson may need to consider on more of a, a physical space basis or situational basis, or you could consider on. Or situational basis, or you could consider on that basis this evening. Sporting events typically take place, obviously, in a large gymnasium or something like that. While the physical proximity might be close, it is um. It is a different environment.
Even if we're going to allow it in the gym, we should allow it in music. And not pick and choose. That's just my opinion. Caroline?
Well, I I think Leisha's point was that we're we're trying to rely on the professional organizations that are involved in those activities, but. My, what I consistently read certainly earlier in the pandemic is that. Uh many of the uh events that resulted in. Very significant infection of many individuals had to do with singing, even church choirs. Um choruses in schools, I mean, that was a pretty consistent uh risk factor. So uh I I mean, I don't disagree that sho- shouting indoors uh in a gymnasium isn't probably equally. Unsafe for at least vulnerable people, but um. I think that, you know, we we kind of have to come down on the side of um. Masking or not masking in in large part based on professional organizations that are. Making decisions that involve that that entire entity, whether it be music, sports, whatever. I mean, it's it's. I don't disagree with you that it seems inconsistent, but it's two different organizations.
But we're just seeking their advice, that doesn't mean we have to follow that. I think we're, we're looking at our kids in our school, and I think if we're saying it's okay for this group, then it needs to be okay for that group.
Well, alternatively, we could say it's, if it's not okay for this group, then it maybe shouldn't be okay for that group. I mean, potentially.
But I think it shouldn't be one way for one group and one and a different way for another. When the the act of 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 being vocal and loud is is really the same. The same thing's happening, the same spray, the same close to people. But anyway. I'm just putting that out there that I struggle with that.
Yeah, I think um, I think first of all, I would always defer to, um I know. Mr. Benson has has been um extremely thorough with um reading up and doing research and. Um and has worked very hard to protect his students throughout the pandemic um from transmission and. Um I I think it's i- in my mind. Protecting our students while they're performing with each other. Is is a little bit of a different obligation than protecting spectators who are voluntarily coming. To watch an event or game. I feel more responsible for, frankly, for the students than for. People who are voluntarily coming. Um a- a- and can, you know, choose to mask or not mask. Versus, I I feel a greater obligation to be protecting um the student performers.
But we're not making the athletes, the wrestling team, the basketball team, the whoever.
Well, I mean, we haven't said that, we haven't voted on anything. I absolutely have issues with wrestling and basketball particularly. Um uh it's, I I'm just very surprised that MIAA did not. Lay out additional considerations for indoor sports where participants are very, very, very close to each other. While they are, you know, uh breathing heavily. And it's unfortunate that they didn't and and left that up to local control.
Again, I I think what you're saying is that, you know, we we certainly have the option of adding. Some additional um. Safety measures for specific groups or specific situations. And you're exactly right, I mean, the risk for for basketball players, for example, has been through the roof, really, throughout the pandemic. Um, you know, luckily, it's mostly young, healthy people and. Um, you know, they've been able to to withstand really very significant infection rates. Uh but some of those young, healthy people, of course, live with their grandparents. So uh. You know, who are certainly at far greater risk. So I I think that we may want to look at some of these specific, as I said, groups or. Situations. I think, Michelle, what you're saying is you don't think that that singers, people singing together, practicing together, should have to wear masks. Um.
Correct.
Just looking at all of the the research on that, I just am not comfortable with your position. I get that it's no fun and, you know, to be wearing masks and certainly would be. Much more pleasant for everyone if no one were wearing masks, but on the other hand. Some of those singers are also living with grandparents or singing grand- seeing grandparents regularly, so even though they be maybe young and healthy. Um we're trying to minimize the larger risk, I'm sure. Those young singers would feel truly awful if they went home and infected a parent or grandparent. So that would be um, you know, a significant negative impact on their lives as well.
Nancy?
Yes, I just wanted to say that the mask update, uh mask mandate is February twenty eighth. And at that point, winter sports are basically over. So now we're moving on, well, except.
No, they're going into playoffs. And so, Mike, yeah.
Go to playoffs, there's like a varsity basketball team. Or or I I think wrestling's over, I think gymnastics is all, you know. So I think the risk, as Caroline was talking about, is that will be like, and then the spring sports are gonna start, so we're outside again. Baseball, spring track, all that, and um. I just, I I feel like with the singers, like the play is coming up. I don't know if they have to wear masks at the um Darable Auditorium for the. Uh Legally Blonde musical that's coming up. I don't know the details on that, but like. I do realize, I am very proud of Mr. Benson and how he keep, he's kept up with us the whole time. Kept us informed about the music program and what they're doing and what they can and cannot do. Thank you.
Jackie?
Thanks, Michelle. Um I guess before we get into the weeds of all of this, maybe we should talk about kind of the. Broader decision that we have to make um about whether to go forward with optional masking and. Um I really appreciate all the data Mrs. Pruitt and Dr. Cabral got together for us. Um, you know, hearing um the opinions of the teachers and the nurses. And the mental health professionals in our schools was very helpful. I'm really glad we could get um Mrs. Kennedy's. Um uh view on this as well. Um and I I I think looking at the data you provided tonight, the case counts that are down, thank goodness. Um not just in our schools, but in our town and in our state. Um and I think it was really helpful to see that there wasn't a surge last year after February vacation as well, that was helpful. Um and then just getting a little information on on the Desi decision and what they use to make their decision, so. I I mean, I think we can kind of tweak things as we get into the discussion, but. Um kind of the broader discussion is whether to go mask optional on February twenty eighth. And based on all the information that you all have provided tonight, I think that makes sense. I think your plan going forward makes sense as well. But I'm interested to hear from the other school committee members how they feel about that.
What you said makes a lot of sense, Jackie. Um we should get to the larger issue first. And then, you know, kind of retain the uh authority to look at specific situations where we feel that. Students or others may be at enhanced risk.
Nancy?
I would like to thank Dr. Cabral and her staff for uh giving us that recommendation. It's clear, it's concise. People have to be respectful of each other, um no matter what the vote is tonight. Um and. Uh going back to one of the things on her list is the hand washing. And I remember when we started this whole thing two years ago, everybody was supposed to wash your hands, sing Happy Birthday twice. And I think we've kind of gotten away from that, we've kind of gotten away from that, you know, staying apart a little bit and uh. I think we just need to be respectful of each other and I believe that mask um masking could go away February twenty eighth. And thank you, Dr. Cabral and staff, for doing such a great job.
Jackie?
Sorry, there's just one other thing I wanted to say that I thought was very important in the presentation as well as. Um you know, there are gonna be people, uh students and staff that are gonna continue to wear masks for a variety of reasons and. I really appreciate um you um coming out and saying that we really need to be respectful of that as well. Um and keep an eye on that and make sure they um they feel comfortable as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? Jim?
Just to say, um uh the past week has been a whirlwind of communication and data gathering, so. Um again, thank you to Dr. Cabral and your team for pulling together all of that data. Um and checking with different stakeholder groups within the district for their opinions that they were. Um it was really valuable information for us to have and um, you know, I know that the public. Many people were hoping we would have been able to have, you know, meet and have a decision on this last week. I, for one, am glad that the timing worked out so that we were able to gather information and feedback so that we could make a really thoughtful decision that incorporated. Um all of the information that we needed. And I do want to say, um I I happen to um. Uh interact with a handful of high school students this weekend, uh three, three different students and. It was interesting that once they heard, you know, that I was on the school committee. They asked actually to endorse keeping the mask mandate, which surprised me, I would have thought that, you know, the students would have been the first ones. To say, you know, hooray, can we please take the masks off and uh three very, very thoughtful. Um students from OA who had uh their concerns. About um why they felt that masking should be maintained uh and not made optional, so. I just wanna say, you know, I'm not gonna name those students, but if your parents are on here or if you're on here, um I appreciate. That you were empowered to give me that feedback. Um I definitely. Um consider your viewpoints and and value them very much, so I really appreciate students speaking up. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Caroline?
To add to that little bit, um there have been a number of parents who've who've indicated either by messaging us or. Even posting on social media that they fully intend to have their children continue to wear masks, so. As both Jackie and you mentioned before, it's, it is really important that we. Have a strong recommendation that, you know, individual choice be respected. And that there not be instances of kids on on either end of the situation. You know, criticizing or somehow making fun of other kids, that that's uh something that we just cannot tolerate.
So I'm going back to Jackie's comment, she talked about the bigger picture and then the the little nuances. I, were you suggesting Jackie that we vote on the bigger picture and then? Drill down, like, I'm not really sure where to lead this conversation from here, I'm gonna make sure everyone is getting covered what they want covered.
Yeah, I mean, I think there there are some exceptions to optional masking as Dr. Cabral laid out anyway. Um I'm not sure how to go forward and discuss like the. Kind of the weeds that we were getting into, but I think we should make the overall decision first and then we can kind of. Parse things out if we want to. Um I I assume, Dr. Cabral, you need a vote on this from us?
We do, I was able to determine that that is true.
Okay, so I I just thought it would make sense to just have the first vote whether we are. Um willing to go mask optional on February twenty eighth to follow Desi's recommendation and Dr. Cabral's. Um and Mrs. Pruitt's recommendation.
Leave out all the little, well, the three mandatory condition or the three conditions of the bus thing.
I don't know, we do, we take, we take the whole thing as a whole, but the current recommendation that Dr. Cabral has made, and obviously it's consistent with Desi. Does in fact include the exceptions for music and and athletics and so on, based on the. Uh those organizations, those professional organizations, but we can then. Go back if we need to to. For further discussion of um some of the smaller changes. But I I think it makes sense, I mean, we certainly wouldn't want to leave out the nurses' offices or, you know, the buses because those are required. So so we, so, well, but when Michelle was saying, we would, we, if we just voted to um accept. The removal of the mandate or to to make masks optional.
Those are also part of Desi's recommendations.
Right, right. So we could accept Desi's recommendations, but also. Um I think we need to for now, accept the recommendations of the superintendent. In regard to, you know, specific groups that may be um. Somewhat different from, does does Desi have a specific uh position on the singing? I don't think they have.
Which is why I've div- uh, which is why I have defaulted to the professional organizations. And I did, I did review that again, uh I did review that with Mister. Um Benson, who said that he thought that it was uh wise.
I think we should go with really your your whole package, so to speak, for now, and then we can. Have further discussion about. You know, what may be um differences among groups and whether we're comfortable with that. But I think for now, we should, we should go with um, well, in this case, uh Mister Benson's uh recommendations, which. I just happen to agree with, but um. Of course, I want to go with what I agree with, but uh but I I just think that. You know, we need to go ahead and vote on the um acceptance of Desi's recommendations. But I'd be more comfortable if we also included the larger recommendation or the. The additional recommendations that our superintendent has made. Based on.
Sorry, you go ahead.
No, I also just want to point out that the mandatory masks for singing and bell covers for instruments is when they're in close proximity. And it says in the recommendations that this may not be needed because of how spread apart they are. So while the recommendation is if they're super close, they might need to to wear masks. That isn't necessarily what will happen because we are able to spread them out and we have been able to spread them out.
Right, which is in my um recommendation.
Right.
But then that puts Mister Benson in a spot of making judgment calls that parents may or may not agree with. And I'm not sure that's a fair situation to put him in.
I I can guarantee you.
Well, he's just making a recommendation, he's just making a recommendation for your consideration.
And we have been able to keep the kids in um when playing instruments and singing apart from each other.
Why we need to have it in there? That. Because it it, they are being kept apart and he's very vigilant about safety with them.
Uh right, but I I think in practicality, you know, I don't know how large the cast is, say, for Legally Blonde. But I would imagine that there's a chorus of of singers and dancers who are very close to each other. Similar to how they are in show choir performances, I would imagine those ensemble numbers are are not. At excessive distance. Versus, you know, maybe something more stationary, right, yeah, yeah, in classes.
I'm talking about during the school day, yeah.
Right, right, yes, I think we're thinking of, you know, those performances where they're moving around the stage, crossing in front of each other, where you have. The large chorus up on the stage in there, they're they're in pretty tight.
I don't know, I want to be able to support the the twenty, February twenty eighth day, I believe that's a sorry thing to do. I'm really struggling with. The different, treating different groups differently. I I hear you guys, so I do hear you, I just.
Michelle.
Nancy. Go ahead.
Is this, is this music thing also classroom music from grades K through six? For example, if they have classroom music or K through five?
Yes, if they're two, if they're in close proximity, yes.
And they are, they're, you know, this, they're three feet apart. I mean, last year they were six feet apart. But that's for singing, like Caroline was saying, is that, you know, a super spreader? I don't know. But is it that part of music too? Not just the high school, the, you know, the middle school and the high school?
Right. This is not just for high school performances. This is all music classes. So and and beyond music classes, our younger grades, we have curricular programs which which have singing embedded in it. They sing in the classroom quite a bit. Opening meetings often start with a song. So so I know we're, we're focusing just on high school performances, but this is really a pre-K through twelve, whenever someone is singing issue. And the recommendation that is in my slides from the International Music Organization, they actually did an aerosol study, which is easily found online, which is the basis for their decision making. You know, has, has a study been done for crowds in a gymnasium? I'm not aware of that, but since I am aware of the study that they publish and that we access for guidance on music, I, I just feel that it's important that I share that with you.
So are you suggesting that at morning circle time or whatever, when they're singing, that that qualifies for mask wearing?
Unless they can't spread apart. That's the recommendation of the music organization.
So putting that in there is a very slippery slope.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said, Michelle. What did you say?
So leaving that clause in there, it becomes a slippery slope. And all of a sudden, you've got, now you've got every class, probably pre-K through two, who has some kind of maybe singing going on in the, in the classroom. And they're having to say, put your mask on, take your mask off, put your mask on, take your mask off during, I don't know, the twenty minute or whatever, half hour circle time.
Again, I just want to clarify. Yeah, again, I just want to clarify that also in the recommendations, it's that teachers are still implementing distancing. And this has been done and continues to be done throughout our classrooms. So during morning meeting, the kids may be distanced if they're going to sing a song and or or remain at their seats if they sing the song. These are all things that are, that our teachers are really good at, at figuring out so that they can, they can deliver instruction.
So then I come back, it doesn't need to be in there if they're addressing the issue.
Well, I think the way it's described in the in the document that we saw is that if, if people can maintain distance, then, you know, the mask can remain optional. But if they're going to be close together, then we are, you know, requiring masks for everyone's safety. But the other thing is that, and I honestly can't tell you where I saw these articles a year ago, but the length of time that people spend singing in, in a closed environment also has quite an impact on, you know, the, the amount of aerosol in the environment and therefore the viral load, et cetera. So I I think that, you know, if the kids just open with a short song and they're somewhat spread apart, that's not, not going to be a problem. I think there will be children in every classroom that are wearing masks because their parents have chosen to continue that particular safety measure. But my own feeling is that we should vote on, on what Dr. Cabral is recommending. And then we can revisit particular areas or groups and have a further discussion. But I think that we, you know, we need to to get the message out that we're moving forward. Even the CDC, which at this point still has a strong recommendation for masking in schools, is signaling that they're looking at the downward trend in the virus. And I suspect really within the next few weeks, they will come out with, with protocols that are pretty much aligned with what we're considering now. So I think that it's, I think we should move forward and vote and not just be stuck, you know, look at this other issue maybe in, you know, at the next meeting or, or we can do it tonight too. But I think we should take a vote about the, about accepting Desi's lifting of the mandate.
But it's, you're asking for more than Desi. Because these other.
Well, yes, yes, I'm sorry. You're right. I misspoke. I think we should accept Dr. Cabral's recommendations across the board. And then we can revisit any particular area and vote that part in or vote other other things, I mean, vote, vote something in or out, one or another.
Jen?
Michelle, would you be comfortable with if we, if we vote on the recommendation in its entirety? But we have, you know, there's eleven days between now and the twenty eighth and ask Dr. Cabral to seek additional input on some of the specific questions that we might have. And then if something needed to be adjusted between now and then, perhaps we could schedule a, a quick meeting if, if necessary. But, you know, I think in particular, it sounds like you have questions about sort of the practical implementation of the, of the music recommendation, kind of refining that and better understanding what that would look like in practice. And then, you know, I have on the athletic side, again, this, this may be a non-issue. This may just, just be me. I would love a little bit more input from Mr. Matthews on the remainder of the indoor sports season. How much activity there would be from March first onward for the teams that do play indoors in very close contact? And it could, you know, I know anecdotally, I think there are many players in, say, you know, wrestling and basketball stand out in my head just because I just, you know, I know what those look like and I know how close the students are. It may be that they have, maybe they have a very high vaccination rate or a substantial number of students who were recently sick. So they, there may be kind of a, a comfort level with the immunity level among those particular populations or their seasons have ended by then, so it's not a big deal. I would appreciate a little bit more information on that just to see if he has any concerns. And if necessary, then we could maybe refine the recommendation for those specific scenarios. I would just hate to unnecessarily expose kids and have them test positive and then have to go through the return to play, you know, the quarantine and return to play protocol right as, right as their season's ending. You know, given how difficult it, it is to get through these sport seasons. So I, I would just like to make sure that we're protecting the student athletes as much as, as makes sense if he has any concerns about them. And if not, you know, it could be, hey, we're good, comfortable with MIAA and that question gets put to bed.
So if I'm a first grade teacher and I've got the kids on the rug and there's no, where we have voted for the no masks after the twenty eighth and we're doing some kind of activity, singing activity, I'm going to stop and hand out masks?
I think that's what Jen is asking me to collect as information from teachers and from.
Can we not include it now and vote to it in after we find that if we so choose?
I'm sorry, Michelle, I can't agree with that. I'm only one person, I realize, but it, it makes sense to me that we're on the side of safety first and then, and then revisit that. I mean, I think.
I, I agree. I think, I think the risk here is more towards, you know, choral classes, classes where students are singing for forty minutes straight, forty to fifty minutes straight.
That's what Dr. Cabral said. She said it's, it's all class.
I, I understand that, but I think we can get refinement on whether or not the, the recommendation needs to apply to standard early elementary classroom activities where kids are singing for a minute and a half at basically speaking voice and are spread apart in the room. You know what I mean? Like, we can, I think we can get into the, the practical implications of that, maybe with a little bit more feedback from, from Mr. Benson and from, you know, the education staff and, and make it, you know, put together some recommendations and guidelines that, that make sense for people who are in the buildings and, and have to manage these decisions. If, so there is flexibility. I think the language itself contains enough flexibility that it would then be, let's put together some practical guidance so that educators know what they should and shouldn't do. Does that make sense? Or do you think the language isn't flexible enough?
I just, I'm, I'm struggling with, it, it just seems discriminatory to me. But, I mean, I'm one person and I can vote with that. But I'm going to be saying that's, I don't agree with that line. I'm sorry. And I'm getting a lot of texts saying from music people. But we can visit it. I just don't want to put Mr. Benson or teachers in an, in, an uncomfortable spot on a day-to-day basis where they have to make judgment calls that parents may or may not like. Nancy, I saw your hand up. I'm sorry.
So I'm all set. Thank you. I rescinded. I'm all set.
All right.
Could, could we, could I make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I would like to move that we accept the EPS recommendations for mask, what's it called? Optional mask wearing as of February twenty eight, two thousand twenty-two, although I would like to make it tomorrow, but that's okay. And I make that motion.
With, with the with specific, with the specific exceptions or differences.
Well, that's out of the motion, isn't it? It's in the, it's in the document.
Well, that's true. Okay. So I, I think the main point is that it's masks optional with some exceptions. Yeah, yeah. Right.
Wiseman second.
We always have the right to come back and, you know, if there's a big surge or something happens, we always have the right to come back and change it.
Yep, and that's actually part of the administration's program or recommendation. Yep.
So I, I make that motion.
Wiseman second.
Roll call vote?
O'Neill, yes.
Durant, yes, but with.
Preservation, okay.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes. Starr, yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Can I just add, I, I don't want to, I certainly don't want to speak for you, Michelle, but if, if there is a concern about, for example, upcoming performances, that's not included in this because they're in our largest performance areas and their spacing. So I just wanted to clarify that in case that was a concern. That may not be the issue you're concerned with, but I just wanted to point that out.
No, the concern is, is I, I hear what you're saying, but there may be a teacher or an educator who takes it upon themselves to decide that, that, that that is the time to wear a mask and then that puts them in an awkward position. And it puts us and teachers and parents in awkward positions. That's my concern.
Um, okay, I, I just want to note, and I'm not saying that you feel differently than this comment, but I just want to put out there that I have full confidence in the staff to, to make the choices that are best for the students, knowing the proximity, knowing the activity, knowing the duration. I'm, I'm confident that they're going to do what's in the best interest of the children. And I, I am willing to defend that with anyone that takes exception with it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Public comment.
Okay, so please bear with me as we go through these because they are in a few different places. So the first comment is from Lauren Loomis for Abby.
I'm sorry, can I just clarify? You mean they're on different topics going all over the place? Okay, I just want to make sure because there has been suggestion that perhaps these are not being read in their totality or that things are being deleted. I want to make sure that people understand nothing's being read. They're being read in the order that they were, nothing is being omitted. They're being in the red in the order that they were put on there. As long as the person's name and address is there, they're going to be read in their totality. If they have been answered, we will say that it's, I will say that it has been answered and perhaps the person could go back and take a look earlier in the presentation. But everything is going to, as it has been, continue to be read in the order that it's on here. I just, when you said they're not in the right places, I wanted to make sure people understood it just meant the topics jump all over the place because as people put in their questions, they have, it's obviously at different, on different topics perhaps.
And actually, the other thing that I was going to say was that sometimes they'll put a question and then realize that they didn't submit their name. So a couple down, they submit their names, so then I have to find the name and go back up to find the question. So that is.
They will all be read. Every one of them will be read.
Yes. Okay, Lauren Loomis for Abby. Yep. Sorry, go ahead, Caroline.
I just want to say that, as Michelle has reminded everyone a couple of times, it's, it's one comment or question per person until we get through the whole list. And then if we have time, we go back and do another round. I just wanted to remind people of that too, because when you said we're going to read every question, you know, that's it's supposed to be one per person until, that's at the chair's discretion and, and Michelle has mentioned that several times.
Yes, and then just for a point of clarification, would it be, so the first two comments are about another topic not related to masks? So would I not read the other questions from those two people about masks? Because they did put something else.
And that's a great question.
We have typically read questions about other topics, even though.
No, she's saying they asked the one question on a different topic, but then later they ask another question about masking.
Oh. I don't.
I have a suggestion, Michelle. How about if we take all the masking, all the masking questions first and then go perhaps back to other issues? Does that make sense? Just, just to kind of keep it consistent.
Okay. Okay, and there is, there are a few that don't list their names, like I said. So I won't necessarily read those unless that they're, they enter their names later. Okay. So Leonardo Bellini, seven fifty-two Foundry Street Easton, mask mandates. COVID numbers are decreasing. Desi and the governor, Desi stands for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the governor, ending statewide mandates for masks in schools with no conditions for ending the mandates. Stoughton Public Schools is eliminating mask mandates as of February twenty eighth, per direction of the superintendent. Masks protect the user, not others. If a teacher is not comfortable, then that teacher can wear an N ninety-five mask. If a student is not comfortable, that student can wear a mask. We are not asking to prohibit masks, but rather to allow the parents to choose what is best for their own child. This is not about masks. This is about freedom. We need to allow parents to decide for their own kids and not a select few decide for everyone and take away personal freedoms. Please eliminate the mask mandate in schools for all staff and students, regardless of vaccination status, just like Desi and the governor did without a condition of vaccine. Thank you. John Powers, four Meeting House Lane Southeastern. I'm not sure what the definition of mandates being used is or if any board members are licensed to practice medicine to enforce the mask mandate, but enforcing the use of a medical device requires an exam of each individual, a complete health record evaluation and parental consent. So is anyone there a practicing physician? Otherwise, I believe it's a felony.
Well, there's one question. Is anyone there practicing physician? And the answer to my knowledge is no.
Max Powers, twenty-two Summer Street. Since medical mask exemptions are allowed for public transportation, will this carry over to school buses? My children don't wear masks on public transit because of their exemptions. So am I correct in thinking they are not required to wear one on the school bus?
This, this was answered, but this is a federal order for school buses. And so we do not have the, the option of doing anything different at this time.
Okay. Okay. Amy Duffy, one hundred seventy-eight Washington Street. Thank you for all the hard work and information during this presentation. Are parents allowed, are parents going to be allowed in the schools starting February twenty eighth for volunteering during school events, book fairs, readings, assemblies, et cetera? Again, thank you for all the hard work and everything you've done for the kids of Easton.
That's a great question, Ms. Duffy. Thank you. That's, um, that's actually not a, that's an operational issue. That's not a school commission, committee issue. Um, and so that is something that I'm gonna be discussing with the cabinet and the educators. So we are going to announce that as soon as possible, uh, once I get their feedback on that. But as you can imagine, we had a lot of work to do to prepare for this evening, but we're definitely looking into that. Thank you.
Joe Savino, six Oak Leaf Lane. You are reading a biased report, obviously. Michael Duffy, one hundred seventy-eight Washington Street. I want to thank you all for your hard work. COVID has not been easy on anyone. I agree with the recommendations of the superintendent. Masks being optional is a great move. And I also think that teachers and administrators should be vigilant with not allowing bullying for students who want to continue wearing masks. Leonardo Bellini, did I
I'm sorry, was there a question there?
Nope, just a statement.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just
I'm scrolling through.
Okay, that's fine. Scrolling through, meaning you're skipping people who already asked a question to go back to it if the chair allows.
Yes. And skipping ones that don't have, they Okay, Leonardo Bellini, I read his already. Okay, we'll go back. Sorry, just writing these down.
That's okay. I think it's important that everyone has them read, so we'll, you can take your time in doing it correctly.
Mary Namor, forty Forest Edge Road. As for individuals who test positive with COVID, how will their mask wearing be enforced for the safety of peers? Despite reminders, my friends and I regularly see students disregarding these reminders.
That is also a great question. That's part of the implementation, our capacity to implement this that, that we discussed uh, earlier. It is very difficult. It's even difficult to know, for example, which students had COVID. So days six to ten, they're supposed to be wearing their masks. This is something we're just gonna be, have to be able to, or something that we're gonna have to do to the best of our ability. What that is yet, I don't know. Will it be perfect? Probably not. But it is a very difficult thing to, uh, to administer this type of thing appropriately. That's why we need such strong cooperation from parents with their own children and students in helping us to make the very few requirements necessary and, and make sure that they are followed by students.
Megan Almeida, four seven seven Bay Road. Taken into account all the data on the, on the decline in children's mental health and the data science on masks not working, what would be the benefit of keeping a mask mandate and not allowing choice?
Uh, I know that's a question, but I think that that is moot now that
It's been answered.
Taken.
Yeah. Uh, Lauren Loomis for Abbey Road. No, I started with her because it was a question on a different topic.
Okay, sorry.
Yep. How are the teachers in general, but especially in the lower grades, going to enforce mask wearing for students whose parents wish them to stay on? Kids are so influenced by, by their peers.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think I just answered that. Um, certainly, please communicate with your children's teachers. Uh, if you have a strong feeling about them keeping the mask on, please communicate with them. We will do the very best we can. Between your reinforcement and the staff reinforcement, we're going to definitely respect your wishes as a parent of the very smallest children.
Lydia Mikhayel, seven High Street. Um, this, she has two questions in here, but one of them was not answered. So one of them was already answered, the first one being how will you enforce mask wearing for COVID-positive students? Failure, failure to do so would endanger other students. But this one says, would desk cleaning be mandatory as well?
Uh, we still have all of the desk cleaning materials in, available in every classroom in every school.
Kathy Harris, twenty-two Gilmore. So I'm not understanding about the music. Children wore masks for the orchestra singing recently. If children want to wear masks during singing, they should be able to. If they do not, they should have that option. Caroline, we've learned so much in the past year. Please do not cite year-old data. Okay, um, Danielle Golenberg. Twenty-two Possum Run Road. Doesn't optional mask wearing apply to singing situations and sports? Meaning if a family chooses to mask their child, they would have them on during circle time singing, chorus, practice games, et cetera. Social distancing is a recommendation, not a requirement, correct? Certainly no social distancing in sports. All of these refinements feel like a slippery slope to a lot of mandated circumstances.
I, as far as the music, again, I just conveyed the music association's recommendations. Because they are representatives of the music professionals in the country. But as noted, we're gonna be collecting more information for the school committee and they can make refinements to that if they choose.
Erica Mandell, fifty Main Street. Thank you all for making the right decision. Dr. Cabral, I appreciate the recommendation greatly. Thank you so much. There is a question that's not related to masking, so I'll come back to that. Oh, sorry, let me go back here. Hey, somebody didn't put their last name. Okay, that is. Okay, sorry, Max Powers already said one. Monica Halama, fifteen Foundry. Thank you for saying, staying consistent with following Dessie on this topic and making masks optional. Please keep in mind that children won't be using masks while playing against districts where masks are optional in sports. So forcing children to play basketball or to wrestle only in Easton makes no sense. If masks work, those who are afraid should, should continue to wear them. Masks in sports is even more dangerous. Option all the way. Okay. Okay, um, so that is all the comments on masking, where everyone gets one turn. Do you want me to go back now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Joe Savino, six Oak Leaf Lane. Hello, can someone answer me, please? When is the mask discussion? So when are we getting to this mask debate? We are all waiting and wanting to give our input as to the serious situation. That's rude. Are you incapable of answering my question? Can you please get to my question? Are you reading? Oh, I've read that one. Are you reading a bias report already? Sounds like all you people in this Eastern School Committee all need to be in Newton, where you fit in. What a lie. Not one kid wants to wear a mask. How many parents and kids have given input about not wearing the mask? Answer, please answer.
Um, I actually started collecting that information. I don't, I'm not finished because I haven't gone through all the emails, but I've gotten several emails. I'm sure the school committee has too. I can compile them and report that at a future meeting if the school committee so desires.
And Joe Savino, six Oak Leaf Lane again. Again, please answer question. Are you saying that no parents have said they wanted to end the masks? How about answering our questions? This is such a disastrous display of abuse of power. When are you gonna answer our questions? Okay. Um, going back to John Powers. Has all the, John Powers, I already read his information, so I don't think I need to read it again. Has all the officials in town involved taking an oath of office and is everyone bonded there? My comments don't seem to be getting addressed.
Yes, um, the school committee members take an oath of office because they're elected officials. Mrs. Pruitt and I are not elected officials, so we don't take an oath of office. And school committee members are not required to be bonded, nor are central office administrators.
John Powers, here it is, for Meeting House Lane. I'm not sure what the definition, oh, I read that one already, sorry. What is your position on students that have antibodies?
I'm gonna interpret that to mean if a student has been positive for COVID, but I certainly, uh, correct me if I am wrong on that. Uh, if a student is positive for COVID, we do not require, uh, proof of a negative test for ninety days.
Are all the people involved in the mask mandate enforcement taking an oath of office and is everyone bonded? Okay, you wrote that twice. Why is the policy on children, what is the policy on children of antibodies? Okay, they asked a couple of times. Okay. Going back to John Powers. No, I'm sorry, Max Powers. The Eastern Board of Health does not have jurisdiction over schools. They would not be able to override any decision the school committee makes. Please ensure you have your facts correct.
Okay. Russell Johnson of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education told superintendents that on a matter of public health, the, the health department can overrule the school department on that. Um, and so if they wish to require masking, they can do that.
Max Powers again, at, says federal, federal allows for mask exemptions. So it is correct that mask exemptions are then accepted on school buses. So is it correct that mask exemptions are then accepted on school buses?
Uh, mask exemptions were accepted for, uh, medical exemptions and that would continue. The details of a medical exemption are in our playbook on our website.
Leonardo Bellini, seven fifty-two Foundry Street. The mask mandated, the mask mandate being eliminated, eliminated does not mean people can't wear masks. If a student has grandparents and wants to wear a mask, they can wear a mask. We are not making masks illegal, just optional. That needs to be made very clear. Dr. Cabral made it clear, but committee members sound like they are not taking that into account in their comments. Leonardo Bellini, again, I see a very large wish list. Uh, oh, that's not, okay, that's not about masks. Sorry, I'll come back to that. Uh, Lauren Knoller, fifty-one North Main Street. Will the district continue to provide K ninety-five masks to staff members who still wish to wear them?
Yes.
Diane Renko, fourteen Scott Drive. Thank you so much for working so hard for our children. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Kathy Harris, twenty-two Gilmore. That is not true. My children had valid medical masks exemptions and they were not granted. Um, so why would I believe that they will be valid on masks, on buses?
If you wish to contest a medical exemption that was denied, you can contact my office for that.
Okay, here are some other topics now. Lauren Loomis, forty-four Abbey. In other communities, this isn't, this was in, um, I think that this is in reference to the voting on primary day. In other communities, a select group of students volunteer at the polls and receive some sort of credit. Leonardo Bellini, seven fifty-two Foundry Street Easton. Is the town clerk being persistent and directing towards our budget being affected? I know I had an issue with parking as a voter. I got blocked in by some kids' cars. They eventually moved the vehicles, but it did make me late for work. With COVID not fully leaving and everyone trying to get a larger voter turnout, plus the large number of precincts, we should have the day of voting closed for kids. Kids don't have time to observe the process, so it is a safer situation to not have the kids in school when there is voting taking place.
I'm not certain about the question that's being asked about the town clerk. The town clerk, our budget's not being affected, um, either way. So I think that answers your question. Um, in terms of the parking issues, thank you for that feedback and we'll make sure that we focus, that we have specific focus on the parking lot for voters to make it as convenient as possible for people to come into the building to vote.
Okay. Okay, Kathleen Sheehan, Harrison Avenue. Please bear with me because this is, it's, she was limited in her text that she could write, so it is multiple texts. They do continue, so I'm just going to read all of the, um, all of it together as one. Kathleen Sheehan, Harrison Avenue. Per six oh three C M R twenty-seven point zero three, quote, prior to the beginning of each school year, every school committee shall establish school year schedules for each of the public schools under its supervision and control, end quote. And per Eastern School Committee Policy, I C slash I C A, the quote, school calendar for the ensuing year will be prepared by the superintendent and submitted to the school committee for approval by May first of each year, end quote. And per school committee policy ID, quote, the length of the school day is negotiated in the collective bargaining agreement with the Eastern Educators Association. The specific opening and closing times of the schools will be recommended by the superintendent and set by the committee. The superintendent is authorized to make minor changes in opening and closing times to simplify transportation scheduling. However, major changes in schedules will be subject to committee approval, end quote. Students losing a full day of instruction time is a, quote, major change, end quote. Unrelated to merely simplifying transportation scheduling, therefore, a discussion and a formal vote was required per your own policy. In addition, per my recent email exchange and conversation with Dessie, Commissioner Riley, did not state that districts are permitted to use snow days due to s- school staff, quote, overextension, end quote. He did state that snow days could be used to accommodate staffing shortages during COVID surges. As we know, snow days need to be made up at the end of the year and do result in a loss of instructional time. With that, since a lack of educator planning time and teacher burnout have been chronic issues plaguing many public schools, can you please describe any creative solutions that you are implementing to retain quality educators while addressing the learning loss resulting from school closures? I'm particularly interested in solutions that benefit all parties, students, parents, guardians and educators. Solutions shouldn't reduce student instructional time and shouldn't place unanticipated financial burdens upon families. As you can imagine, there are many parents and guardians who are paid hourly wages and these calendar changes result in a loss of wages for school, for such families. Sorry for the multiple messages, however, the, there appears to be a character limit on comments.
Okay, so I, I hope I captured everything. Chrissy, please follow it along with me to make sure I don't leave anything out. Yes, we do vote on the annual calendar. We do that before May. We just did it this evening. Um, we typically do it in January. Um, we typically do it in January. This year we, uh, excuse me, we reviewed it this evening. It's going to be voted on at the next meeting. We typically do it in January. It's going to be done in March this year, so it's far ahead of the May deadline. The open and close time is the open and close time of school. That is, that does not include half days. However, the school committee voted on that as well, so they did vote on it. Commissioner Riley did say it. He said it directly to me. The words staff overextension was actually a quote from him. Uh, I don't know who you spoke to, and I apologize on their behalf if you got contradictory information, but my information was directly from the commissioner. The creative solution for retaining quality educators um, when they're burnt out is giving them time to collaborate with their peers uh, on these two half days. Um, asking them to do that outside of the school day contributes to their burnout. The out of school time, um, we believe as professional educators is going to be enhanced by the amount of time that the professionals can spend together. Um, we are very wary of the financial burden that this places on families, which is why I gave financial options to all families, including free scholarships to those who are in need.
Yep, that was, I think you addressed it all.
Thank you.
Okay. Michael Duffy, one seventy-eight Washington Street. What is the teachers' union stance on the mask mandate? Since we are now making the mask optional, will that affect staffing?
I, uh, there, I actually provided the school committee in their packets with information that you heard them reference from multiple different constituents in the district. There is one specific from the Educators Association. And I would like to read it word for word if I can find it or a school committee member can find it before I do. Should be in their packets. But I can get it.
I have it if you want me to read it.
Uh, sure. Thank you.
Uh, to Dr. Cabral and the school committee from Amy and E A President Regarding Mask Policy. The following reflects the E A feedback on the recent Desi decision to lift the mask mandate. Two hundred ninety-four E A members responded to the survey. A majority of the respondents were in agreement with lifting the mandate. It is noteworthy that the timing of the lift presents concern for some. The position of the E A is that we are in support of implementing a mask optional policy. However, we encourage you to give careful consideration to a delay until March fourteenth. And that's from Amy Me and the President of the Union.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Um, John Powers for Meeting House Lane Southeast and Mass. With all the comments I've been listening to, has the mask mandate been lifted, optional, or still being enforced for the rest of the year? Thank you. Thank all of you for your patience, especially dealing with such a sensitive topic. Respectfully, John Powers.
Okay, so Chrissy, would you mind putting my recommendation up one more time, that slide? I think it would be a good opportunity to repeat that because I agree it does seem to be confusing uh, at this point with the comments that are made, so um, the school committee this evening accepted this recommendation in its entirety with the caveat that I am going to look for more information regarding music and when masks might be worn in um classes and performances when singing and also, excuse me, and also um, in sporting events. So it's optional masking for all students and staff starting February twenty-eighth. Reason we didn't do March is because our data shows us we didn't have a surge after February vacation last year. It includes optional masking for P E, pre-K, performance audiences, all sports and activities and audiences and school visitors. Mandatory masks for singing and bell covers for instruments when in close proximity. However, based on larger distancing, they may not be needed. For example, larger performances in our biggest performance spaces or outdoors. Strict adherence to current COVID protocols in the playbook, including where masking is mandatory, and again, the playbook is on our district website. That, anything that needs to be updated there in terms of this will be done as soon as possible. Uh, mandatory family and individual reporting of symptoms, illness, testing and results. Mandatory masking on buses for everyone. That's a federal order. Strong recommendation of continued max masking for unvaccinated and or immunocompromised individuals. Strict support for anyone who chooses to continue wearing a mask, and I would add also support for people who are choosing not to wear a mask. And avoid disclosing individual medical information, um, trying to work with students who who may have had COVID and are required to wear a mask due to the D P H protocols and continued mitigations and data monitoring, adjusting this as or if needed. And that was, uh, accepted by the school committee tonight.
Okay, looks like there might be one more. Yep. Lisa Galus, eleven River Street. Please let music and theater students make their own decision on masking. Those who want a mask can choose to do so, same with sports. Especially the musical kids should be permitted to sing out loud and clear. They've been muffled for two years and it is no longer needed. Those with grandparents or other issues are welcome and encouraged to continue to mask. Thank you.
Um, yeah, and again, um, I am getting more information for, uh, excuse me, for the school committee on athletics and music. But I just want to note, um, when you're talking about theaters, that would be considered a large performance area. And so if students are uh, on a stage, for example, and they're moving frequently or um, that then masking is optional already. Um, unless the school committee changes that based on the guidance I get from those departments.
Leonardo Bellini, seven fifty-two Foundry Street, Eastern. I see a large wish list, wish list for the school budget, but I do not see a school resource officer listed. Why wouldn't you include an S R O in the budget wishlist? You say that safe is paramount, but an S R O is a key part of safety and not in the budget, or perhaps I missed it. Or perhaps I missed it with a question mark.
Okay, so, um, so that's referring to the capital budget that I, um, explained earlier, uh, this evening. So, um, there is, the capital budget is not our operating budget. Um, I, I know it's just semantics, but it's very important to us. We, we don't consider anything a wish list. We would never put forward something to the taxpayers um, of Eastern unless we really felt it was a priority and we're ready to advocate strongly for it. But the capital budget is, uh, that's not people. Capital budget is very strictly only for uh, items over twenty-five thousand dollars that have a useful life of five or more years. Items, not people. So that would be technology, that would be facilities. Uh, it's not for people. People, human resources are in our operating budget, which is a separate budget that we present at town meeting. That's a forty-three million dollar budget. Um, this capital is, uh, all of the departments in town put forward a capital budget. And so even the police department, they don't ask for police officers, they ask for police cruisers, for example. The D P W would ask for vehicles, um, fire engines, hoses, equipment. Uh, no one puts people in a capital budget because it's not allowed. That's not just Eastern, that's everywhere. Capital budgets are for things, items.
And then lastly, Kristen Hobbs, eighteen Lyman Wheelock Road. Does any of this change the requirements that parents volunteers are not allowed in the buildings? I know you answered that, Dr. Cabral, already. And she said specifically asking for fundraisers such as Scholastic, et cetera, that rely on parent volunteers for success.
Um, I did answer, it's an operational issue, so it's something we determine with our cabinet and our, um, educators, not with the school committee, so we wanted to do this first. Uh, we still have time before the twenty-eighth, and so we will meet with them and get their recommendations on that. As soon as volunteers are allowed back in the building, we will absolutely let everyone know about that, and thank you for asking that question.
And then lastly, Leonardo Bellini, seven fifty-two Foundry Street, Eastern. Um, thank you for the clarification on the budget types and differences. I appreciate it. And Kristen Hobbs just, just added, thank you, sorry, I must have missed it. Appreciate you all.
No problem. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Superintendent Notes, Dr. Cabral.
Hmm, I don't have any to see. Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent Notes, Chrissy.
Sure, I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow is a half day, so, um, just to throw that out there and remind everyone. Um, and also Debbie Irving, who, uh, was able to work with our staff, which was remarkable. Um, the feedback was, was great. And, uh, Debbie Irving is the author of Waking Up White. She spoke to the community and then did a follow-up session just with staff on, um, how to uh, ensure that their instruction is equitable. So it was really, it was, it was great to be able to work with her again like that. And then I also want to let you know that we are starting the process of a full adoption of, um, uh, the, a new literacy program, kindergarten through grade six. So what this entails, and that, that's on the capital plan as you approve tonight. It will be a year and a half process to really vet the correct program um, and, and find the program that would best meet the needs of our students in Eastern. Um, we have two separate committees that will fall underneath this literacy, this literacy process. The first committee is the literacy adoption committee, and the other is the literacy pilot committee. So, um, you don't have to be on one to be on the other, uh, or you can serve on both. So it is a volunteer, is voluntary for our staff. Um, and we do have some, some limits, just because sometimes the size of committees can be too big. Um, but we, we, an email went out, we, I have teachers that have responded, their interest, teachers and administrators, their interest to serve on the adoption committee. At this point, for the remain, remainder of this year, we'll be inviting publishers to come speak to us, show us their product. Um, really look at how this supports what our needs are for our kids in Eastern. Um, and what, then we will choose two to three programs that we are going to pilot next year. So next school year, there will be certain teachers that will pilot um, the literacy program, and at the end of that process, we will, um, we will, while they're piloting, they will be meeting monthly with the adoption committee to provide updates on how, you know, on anything that they, that they particularly like about, about the, uh, program or anything that they, um, don't like about the program. And then once that, once that process comes closer, we'll all come together and make a decision on, uh, a program that we recommend. I just want to note also that, you know, our, the word, we unders- we understand that our, um, any program that we look at is written for fifty states. It's written for multiple countries. Um, so we, we in Eastern write our own units. Um, and that's based off of the, um, of our, our Massachusetts frameworks. The programs that we adopt, we use as the, as the primary source of material that we pull from. Um, so that, that's why these programs are very important. But we also understand that our standards in Massachusetts are much higher than most of the, most of the other, most of the country, most of the other states. So I just want, you know, if we, if we are adopting a particular program, it doesn't necessarily mean that every lesson will be implemented exactly as written because there may be part of the program that doesn't address a particular standard or, um, or we may have to pull from another grade level because, like I said, our, um, our, our, uh, standards are higher. So I just want to share with you that we are starting that process. Our first meeting will be, um, in March. And I can continue to update you as we continue through the process. Um, I'm really excited. We have some, you know, it's, it's, and the reason why we're doing this is because Reading Street, which is the program that we currently use, they don't make anymore. They, 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 they make it, but it's not updated. It's an outdated program. Um, and any, any information, new information that comes out on the science of reading or, or any other, you know, information that comes out, it's not updated. So it's printed as is, and it's not updated like the other programs that are out there. So I'm really excited about this process. I think it's going to, we're going to learn a lot about, about, um, all the new research out there about how kids learn how to read. And I think we are going to, this will also entail writing, a writing component as well. So I think that we're really, we're, we're heading on the right track and I'm excited for this. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, school committee notes. Caroline, do you have anything tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay. Jackie?
Just want to wish everyone a happy February vacation. I'm sure everyone's really looking forward to it. I know I am.
Great, one more day. Jen?
Oh, me first, is it Nancy?
Uh, I went out of line. I'm sorry. I'm mixed up on my screen.
Oh. Nancy, do you want to go if you have anything?
Sure, I can. Um, I just want to thank all the parents and, and people that wrote emails to us on both sides of the mask, um, mandate, uh, decision. I understand both viewpoints, I really do. And I hope that we don't get an uptick and that we're moving past Omicron and everything else, so, but I just want to thank the parents and, and like Jackie said earlier, just, everybody's just got to be respectful of people that wear masks or don't wear masks. It's just, we've got to be safe for each other. The other thing that I did want to bring up, and I, I don't know if Michelle was going to do this, but I had spoken about Legally Blonde earlier. And, um, it's March fourth, fifth and sixth at Oliver Ames, uh, fourth and fifth are seven thirty and the sixth is at two o'clock. So it's been a couple of years since we've had a musical, so I'm really looking forward to this and good luck to all the kids. And, um, I think the wrestling team and the girls' basketball team are in the States, so good luck to them too.
Awesome. I didn't know that. All right, now Jen.
Uh, I echo most of what Nancy said, so, uh, she's got a lot. Um, yeah, good luck to, uh, to all the athletics teams that are wrapping up their seasons. I know there've been, uh, quite a few, um, accomplishments and awards. I won't say them now because I know I'll miss a team, uh, but, but it's been really fun to read, uh, Bill Matthews Twitter feed um, and, and to see, uh, all the teams that are celebrating their accomplishments and, um, uh, the Tempo, um, annual dessert less show this year, the dessert show without desserts, uh, was a big success. Uh, it was nice to see all of those really phenomenal, phenomenal performers from our middle school and high school ensembles. They're just incredibly talented, um, and I would encourage anybody in the community, if, um, you know, even if you have younger kids and, you know, this is an annual event, it's typically held around this time every year. It's definitely worth going to and, and especially, you know, bring your, your kids who are squeaking through the recorder in their first years of instruments, um, at R O, uh, you know, bring them and show them where they'll be in a couple of years because it's, it's really phenomenal. Um, how quickly they improve to being really, uh, exceptional performers even at the youngest stages, so. Congrats to, uh, Mr. Benson and Tempo and the whole music program was really great.
And I just want to echo that. That was a fabulous show and it's really, one of the things that they do is they show the the groups in, in order, um, age-wise, so that you can see the growth from middle school all the way through the high school, and it's really awesome to see. They did a great job. Okay. So if there's nothing else, our next meeting is March tenth. And I think we decided that we all agreed on that, so I am going to make a motion to, um, enter into executive session and not to return to open session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation and bargaining. And in my opinion, having this discussion um, in an, in public would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Do I have a second?
Wiseman, second.
All right, roll call vote.
Yes.
Do we ask yes?
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you, and thank you. All right, thank you. And thank you for all the people who tuned in tonight.